I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time off to come in this morning. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll start off with the county assessors.
Again, yeah, thanks for able to make it. It's been a busy year this year here in Carroll. It's been a good year here in Carroll my first year. Everybody has the agenda that we need to be looking at. First on there is for the approval of our March 3 meeting minutes. We get, uh... Nobody approve those minutes for March 3? Motion?
Need a motion to approve the minutes from the March 3, 2014 meeting? Sold. Motion, need a second?
Second by the two pleasures.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying. Motion carries.
Next on that list there is for putting in for my reappointment. Diane's appointment finishes up here December 31, 2015. We can either come back together, the entire conference board, again, to set the reappointment, or we can take care of it now as well. Whatever's the easiest.
When is it? December?
December 31 is when Diane's appointment, I was finishing her... So it'll be effective January 1st, 2016.
As far as your own situation, I know the Department of Revenue has a certain amount of continuing education you need to continue. How's all that going, Brian?
I'm well above my junior education. I think, did you guys, everybody receive the letter from Kerry Hapop on my provisional training?
Not recently.
Okay. Well, it was sent, and the reason, I think you received it a little bit early. Kerry had, he left the state and went to work for a county appraiser position. So June 30 was when my provisional was complete. All my required training Kerry had taken care of. There's a, right now at the tail end, it's just some... They call or stop by to ask me about some training. Other than that, the mandatory is complete. And again, June 30 of this year.
The last one I got was over a year ago.
Oh, I thought Kerry got that, it was sent to you.
I don't remember seeing it either.
Okay, I'll get you that letter. You have a copy of it?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, well, I'll get a copy for everyone then. Okay. Okay.
So you fully expect to be fully certified by June 30?
Correct, yeah. Does he have to complete everything?
Don't anticipate any?
No, no. There's no issues whatsoever. So if you want to wait till I get you the letter, or I'm gonna discuss that public, our next meeting, the reappointment.
Let's see, we could act on it and discontingent down.
I would think so.
Yeah.
That way it's taken care of.
He's been acting as our assessor anyways, so.
It just gotta be contingent that all that meets all requirements.
Correct, yep.
Want to make the motion with contingency.
Someone want to make the motion, or is there any other questions?
I think you did, didn't you?
I certainly will.
Oh, I thought you did.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Brian Teisman as the Carroll County Assessor, contingent on his completing his requirements for his assessor's licensure by June 30 of 2015.
Got a motion on the floor. We need a second?
Mayor's will second.
Okay. Everybody need a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying. Motion carries. Okay, so down to the third item is the assessor salary.
I got a little bit, I wanted to kind of discuss a little bit what we've been doing this year in the office with everyone. Because obviously, nobody always...
There's only one of him?
Oh, I think so.
I think, I think so. I mean, we can have a quorum, provided there's two from two, but I, he's still part of the conference board.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure that I'm legal.
And something.
All right, continue on.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to give a little bit rundown of what we've been doing. Obviously, not everybody knows what we do on a daily basis, what we've done here this past year. As everybody knows, we had the commercial revaluation that's finally complete from Vanguard. And let me tell you, I'm glad that's over. That's quite a doing process to go through all that. We also have, we had the hiring and training of my new clerk, Cindy Hutton. My provisional training, we discussed with the state, which is pretty well complete. I'd say it'll be finished in June 30. I did an urban revaluation, or urban residential revaluation on 7,300 residential parcels here this summer. And that was a huge undertaking in its own. But as we discussed in our last year's meeting, when I wanted the commentary, as a great asset tool for me for doing this, it was a great tool. It paid for itself 100 times over. We added about 40 million in taxable value, but in assessed value. About 600,000 in taxable value for the county in one year with that program that we purchased, so.
Say that one more time. I didn't quite understand.
With the residential revaluation, I was able to complete with the telemetry useful tool, we added about 40 million in assessed value. And then, once you figure that all out, on average, we added about 600,000 in taxable revenue dollars.
How much in taxable?
600,000.
I don't recall it being that much. We only netted a 1.5% gain over that.
That's for, this is for 15 values. You don't even have those yet. So that's upcoming.
Because the majority of that will be in the tax sector, if I remember looking at that online.
Correct, yeah. This will be for 2015 values.
So we can expect great things for next year.
Always great things. So, yeah, so that's, again, that program, I want to thank you that we have that. It's a great tool. I know everybody's always, was kind of weary about adding, you know, digital trinity for doing this process. But in the end, if you figure out what it costs for that contract, it's a six-year contract. You take that 600,000 for each year of it, for that contract, that's 3.6 million dollars, so, for the county. Also, we went around, picked up a lot of things I haven't assessed in years in the county. One is billboards. It's very minimal, but it's one thing that is always usually assessed. And that added about 107,000 in assessed value. Say minimal, but again, things that are out there that should be, have eyes on them.
Those billboards are required to be licensed?
Yes, majority of them are, and we have all the companies, usually a lot of the times they're out of state sometimes, but yeah. These have a state number on them.
Yes, we should have, yeah.
Yep.
Very good.
Cell tower equipment. We've had these cell towers here in our county for years. Majority of the equipment was picked up probably when it was first put up. But there's 1.7 million in assessed value of equipment that hadn't been picked up. So again, more value that we picked up this year. Then as far as what we've been working in the office as well with the girls, everybody knows the Senate File 295 and what that brought to our office. A lot of headaches with the business property tax credit disabled veterans, dual class, multi-res, ag land adjustments. All in all, most changes ever adopted, I think, at one time, to have to throw at an office anyway. So that was quite an undertaking. Also, I became a member of the Central Assessors District of Iowa. I was a, currently, prior was a Northwest District member. I moved over to Central, primarily there's, there are higher valuation counties in that district. And I've been mentoring with an assessor over there as well, getting more knowledge, and just a little bit more questions that pertain to our county than some of the other counties in the Northwest District. So I've been accepted into that county, moved over there for my district meetings on a monthly basis. So overall, as you can see, we've been pretty busy for the year. And doing our job is what should be due, picking up what needs to be assessed in the county. So now, on to budget number, item number three, the budget, our salaries. First off, I-
I'm gonna rise to the point of order here, and I just want to make a clarification. Gene commented, could RB second a motion since there's only one entity there? And I'm not sure if you can. I know you cannot vote with only one member. That's quite clear in the regulation. Says at least two members of each voting unit must be present in order for the unit to cast a vote. So you seconded a motion. I don't know if you can do that. I know you can't vote, which is irrelevant because it would pass either way. But I question whether you should be-
Seconding.
Seconding a motion. I would want to have units, that motion seconded by a unit that has a quorum here, just to be safe. And I found that in here. It's on page four. I thought you were right on that, Gene, but I-
Well, that's what I-
And I knew about where it was, and it says at least two members of each voting unit must be present to cast a vote. Okay, so I would like to bring that, just so it's crystal clear when it's done, because it's only your job at stake.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So I just want to write it for you.
Do we want to rescind that? Would we rescind that and start over?
Why don't we just redo the motion, Dan, and have it correctly done without a shadow of a doubt?
Thanks, Neil.
And I'm quite clear. Maybe you can second a motion, even if you can't vote on it. I'm not sure about that.
Okay, we'll go back to item two.
Item two.
What is the assessor's reappointment?
Yeah, we discussed the assessor's reappointment contingent on June 30 of completion of everything for the December 31 completion of Diane's appointment.
Supervisors, still make that motion? Okay, outside Dan, so I did it through the schools. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying?
Thank you. I feel a lot better now.
Thanks, Neil.
All right, item number three, talk, discuss the salaries. You have the handout there of what we're looking at. And first of all, I understand that my contract was for freeze for two years. So, and that's why I have noted on there, as of 1, 2016 is when my salary would adjust. And does anybody got any questions on our concerns?
I guess we was talking earlier, Matt, as well, we talked about the mileage, and if you want to tell them about.
The mileage increase on the list, item line was, is for Cindy, my clerk, is going to plan on taking classes and also taking a deputy test this year. So she'll be obviously driving down to Des Moines for classes and taking her deputy test. There's an increase in mileage in that, requirements that she'll have to maintain as a deputy. That's the increase in that is for.
Right, we've been discussing mileage share quite a bit the last couple of meetings.
Yep.
Would it be possible for her to take the assessor car to those meetings? It would be great, much less expensive than the 50 or 57 and a half cents.
Yeah, there would be no problem with that unless something, if I had a meeting somewhere at that same time.
It'd be much, since you already have the vehicle, it would be much less expensive to use the company car as opposed to reimbursement for private driving.
Yep. Yeah, there's no issue with that whatsoever.
Very good.
Yep.
I hope that you exercise that whenever possible.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, how are we arriving at the 5%?
The 5% is what I just, with all the other counties of our valuation size, I contacted all of them to see where, what kind of increases they were receiving for the year. And along with the kind of classes and training that their staff is receiving, that's where I increased. I put the 5% for Cindy and for Judy, because both of them, I plan on having them take more classes this year to get our office to a little bit better level of knowledge. And I feel the only way to do that is educating, of course, so that when people call in or we have questions, concerns, that they know the answer.
And so your comparables were-
You can see there in my-
Just on taxable assessed value?
On valuation wise there, yep. You can see, that's, I mean, that's what we, as assessors, we look at. You look at your total valuation in your county. That's going to explain how busy you're going to be. That's how much work you have out there to be dealing with. So that's why, as you can see, we're at about 2.2 billion, we're just under that. So you got Boone and Sarah Gordon were just above us a little bit, and then the four counties below. And the Woodbury, as you see, I noted there, the deputy just took over as assessor this past month. And so she's just getting started there as well. And so I'm just asking to try and get, we're not, I mean, I'm not even at the bottom of our comparables. I'm just trying to get caught up to be comparable to what other assessors are doing for work. And what I've kind of, I guess, you can see what I'm doing for work. I'm not letting any dust under my feet.
No, no, no one's questioning, you know, how much work you're doing. Point probably might be interjected here, though. We do have an additional person in that office.
We do. And as you can see, you can see in that list too.
I don't know if that's adding to your workload or reducing your workload, but one would hold.
It was, it was required. I mean, we needed that, as you can see.
And no one stood in the way of it last year to add that person, but I'm just saying that, you know, you would think that a given workload on an office now with three and a half people rather than the traditional two and a half years would be a little bit lessened on everybody.
It was, it was, it was needed, but also there was a lot, as you can see, of what we did this year, of stuff that hadn't been touched for years because of the workload in that office. There used to be seven people in that office, in this office, years ago.
Really?
There used to be seven people. And you can see Boone has, still has seven, and majority of all of them have five. So we are still very short staff for a county our size.
Going back to your letter that you were hired under, and you were right about the 62,000 being fixed for a period of two calendar years, but also a letter, the line that goes beyond that is says that you can, and I'll read directly from the letter, it says, "You can expect an increase based upon the approval of the conference board and budget," which is what we're here for today. Further says, "In an amount that has been commonly associated with comp board and supervisors' annual raises, if any, for elected officials." So, and it goes on to further say that, "Assuming a January 2, 2014 start date, you could expect to receive that increase on January 2 of 2016, which you've got here, for a six-month period with the fiscal year ending June 30." And so I just want to make sure that, A, we know when that raise would take into effect, which of course, I think you've got figured in here, but then we've got to make sure that that's for a six-month period and not for a full year. And then, and then whatever the conference board decides on annual raise. But it was expected, it would be similar to how it's been traditionally here, which has been in an amount similar to what it's been for elected officials, and this year was 2.5%.
And that's fine. I don't disagree with that, Mark. Also, I want to make a point. Where their office in this building has to have continuing education and take a test to maintain their position.
I think it's quite common with the Tyler technology, for example, there's been a huge amount of learning curve that most of the offices and board houses had to go through with that.
And I did ask them to-
That would be one example, I guess.
Yep.
I think, and I know the ambulance, they're always under continuing education.
Correct.
It's constant there. Those are just a couple that pop up.
Yep. Okay.
So I think everybody's expected to continue their education.
But are there other requirements, if they don't fulfill those requirements, will they lose their position?
Yeah, I would guess if you can't do your job, if you don't learn how to operate the software.
But it's set in place, it's said it's-
If you don't have a license, it's-
If you're an ambulance-
As ambulance, of course, of course.
You've got different things.
Anything in this building?
There are some examples. I'm sure there's some employees that-
I'm just, I'm just pointing out on my end of it, and like I say with-
It will please that you are doing those things. I think that's-
I guess the other thing I'll interject is that basically your salary for each two and a half years, or for two years, I mean, that's something we have to take into consideration also.
And he was hired at an amount higher than what the former one was as well. That was meant to compensate for that. And to get, you know, get him to move clear across the state.
Which was a couple hundred bucks higher than what the previous assessor was receiving, which I was fine with. I was new, and I still am new, and I understand that. And there's, but as you can see, there's other, there's at least five new other offices or new assessors in office of this year that, so I'm not, I'm not the new one in the block anymore. But there's, and there's going to be a lot more new ones coming in. At least probably 50% of the offices throughout the state are looking at new assessors as well. So I'm just bringing this to light. You know, I'm one here to do my job. I'm not going to be sitting behind the desk expecting a paycheck. I'm here to work. That's why these are comparables. This is the kind of work I have to deal with, with three people compared to five for an average at a much lower salary than our comparable counties.
On your work ethic, Brian, I want to compliment you. I know I've had a few questions here and there as a supervisor and as just a private individual, I've had some things happening too that I've asked you about, and your office has gotten back to me very expediently, and I appreciate that. I just want to interject just a little snapshot of history with our previous assessor, Diane. She, one year would want the raise that the elected officials got, and the next year she'd want what the other employees got because they differ. And we says, "Okay, Diane, we're going to do it one way or the other. We don't want you jumping the fence every year, what works best for you."
Correct.
Understand? And she says, "Yeah, I understand." And so she, I think she put her finger down with the elected officials, if I remember right. But we said, "We need to set a system that you kind of follow for where you're going to ask for for your salary." And she did that, very, very, you know, cooperative actually. And I guess I'd like to kind of do that with you too, kind of decide where we're going to fit you in on the scheme of things, you know?
And that-
Which, so it's all kind of known at that.
Yep, I, this is-
Sort of laid out in that letter.
If you see what you have here in front of you, this is where I look at my path. The rest, I, my office is my office. Every, each office, I feel, the recorder's office, the treasurer's office, the auditor's office, they all do different jobs. That's fine. They can be paid whatever. I don't, I don't take that into consideration. I just look at what, because that's, I mean, I'm looking for apples to apples. I'm looking at another assessor over in this county, another assessor in this county. And valuation wise, what kind of work they're doing, and trying just to be honest and be compensated for the same kind of work. So that's where- Does that help?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a little shot of where we came from.
I understand, and this is, and we're new, this is, this is-
Not that you're bound by history.
Nope, I say this is, this is a new office now.
I just am just looking at the figures. Of all these comparables, I would say Boone is probably the most comparable to us.
Correct.
Close, the closest one to us.
Yeah. Washington County, when I did my comparables for the comp board, you guys saw it. Washington County, I don't know what goes on down in Washington County, but they pay all of their elected officials through the moon. I don't know, I don't know if they don't get benefits down there, or they don't, or that's just how it is. But they were, they were number one in every single category across there, and that now includes the assessor's office. So that didn't surprise me at all.
But it's strange here, the budget is the lowest of the whole world's.
Well, their county is probably fairly similar to Carroll County. It's built fairly similar. Same type of population.
And you can see, I mean, it's got, I got the health insurance listed in there. We're one, we're the highest as far as what employee has to pay for their insurance as well.
As a percentage?
I mean, as an average there, the average would be $198.
Oh, for the amount, well-
Correct, amount that we have to pay.
That's a tough thing to compare, because we've had significant double-digit claims year after year after year. I mean, anybody that's been in here the last 10 or 15 years know that this is a type we're trying desperately to stem. But as a percentage, I don't think it's vastly different. But yeah, our rates are through the moon, but we've also got a Cadillac plan too. So those are tough to, those are tough to compare.
Okay.
Washington might be figuring total package too when they put theirs out.
Yeah, from the ISAC report, man, it just says salary. It lists salary, but, you know, maybe not, they're not reporting it the same as the rest of us do too, but man, it's high down there.
Because this, your total is about 5.5, including you.
And I listed in there as well, what I contacted their offices to see what they were getting for this year. And again, Boone, above the all, they, their, their board actually approved 10.66%, but the board of supervisors cut it in half. So they're still looking at, or 5% increase for this year.
The comp board we're talking about?
Comp board, they recommended 10.66% increase.
Any other discussion?
I have one order for the salary increase tomorrow, percentage.
I'd make a motion that it, we stay to the agreement and that Brian's salary would increase at a rate of 2.5% effective January 1 of 2016 for six months of the 1617 budget year.
Motion number four, I need a second.
We're just talking about the assessor budget right here, right?
Assessors' salary.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same saying?
Aye.
Go down to the assessment.
Does that include the deputies with the 2.5 and two?
Yeah, we should probably talk about theirs as well.
I'll make a motion that we go up to the rest of staff at 2.5% then.
Okay, you got a motion? I need a second for the rest of the employees, the assessor's office at 2.5%? Need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, you need a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same saying?
Aye.
Are there any other questions, concerns on any of our line items?
Yeah, data processing, what's going on there, Brian? Why such an increase there?
They, of course, with everything, with the programs, and they keep increasing. And, you know, I'm, the 8,000 that was in there for, and remember last year, I was kind of going off Diane's numbers of what I needed for 1415. The majority of these was under budgeted. I think I had about, I know it was over 8,000 in my data processing for expenditures.
So year-to-date, your fiscal year-to-date, you're over 8,000?
Not to date now, but for, been a 1415 budget. I was-
It will be over 8,000?
No. Last year's budget, the 1415 from Diane's, I was still running on her budget.
Okay, would your budget be 8,000?
The 8,000 didn't meet what I needed for the data processing expenditure.
But we're still in fiscal year 15.
Diane's 14, her 1314 budget, what I ran, correct, yes, what I ran through, which I continued 8,000, because that's what she had for the 1415. You understand what I'm saying?
Not quite.
Okay.
The last budget, you were short.
Correct.
Came up short.
Came up short.
So even with the, in this current budget, he used those figures, so he's going, you're saying you're going to wind up short again this year?
Yes.
That's just what I just had to say.
Sorry, yeah, Diane's was short. I went off of her numbers, projecting, that's what, she would have everything covered. It wasn't.
So 8,000 is not going to cover it through the end of fiscal year 15?
Correct.
What software are you running through?
That's Vanguard, it's Sidwell.
Are you doing Tyler, anything with Tyler?
Yes, we have Tyler programs, which, don't even get me started.
But at least it's contracted. We know how much that's going to be.
Yeah, they, well, some of them are. Some, there's always an increase on certain programs. If we have upgrades to the program, if need be, they bill you for them, so.
Tyler, Sidwell, and Vanguard? Well, you know better than anybody what it's going to be. I mean, you simply know what your contracts are, and so I'm just only questioning.
A lot, and a lot of it was just with the Senate 295 file, the updates on their programs that they had to put into it, and some of them. on their programs that they had to put into it, and some of them, like Tyler may, may be contracted, but you might have an upgrade, or primarily like Vanguard, there might be an upgrade because of that. They have, they have programmers, they have to, they have to build into our systems to be able to make a work for us now.
It's called an unfounded mandate.
So...
Accounting, you got a significant increase there?
Accounting, and that's, I don't know why it's, I think that should be changed. That, what that is, is that is my Vanguard, that has, comes in every year to pick up our new construction, like our commercial new construction, our residential new construction. I don't know why they call it accounting. It should be appraising, is who we, we contract with them to come in and pick up our new construction for us.
So, why wouldn't that be picked up down below there in your reappraisals? Or this is just what you're...
Yeah, that's, that's something completely different. This is this annual, every year they come in, and last year, again, same thing. Diane for thirteen fourteen had ten thousand. I put ten thousand, again, was short. I think it was over twelve thousand dollars I had for their annual services, is what it's called.
And that number's based on new construction num, numbers, right? Like permits?
It's what, yeah, permits, correct.
So, in an essence, that's, that, this is a good problem to have.
Yeah, correct.
We've got construction going on.
Construction going on, yep. And like I say, I was shorted about two thousand dollars, so I just increased it, projecting forward that, let's hope we have more construction from next year.
Putting in revenue. Okay, any other questions on these?
Legal went down.
Correct.
You just don't expect as many protests this year?
Well, I, I expected with the commercial, with that thirty-two percent, that increase that was...
And just didn't get them?
Yeah, I was amazed at the commercial that just kind of let it happen in a way.
Well, didn't things kind of settle in? I mean, we had that statewide at thirty-two percent, and then when the commercials came in, it kind of settled back down in a little bit, and...
Well, the, my commercial values have not, they have not received those yet for the revaluation. Those will be sent out in about two weeks. So, that's, that's, again, we're, we have that, right now, I've got about ten thousand notices that are gonna be sent out this year for changes on all parcels that were adjusted for fifteen.
Then one final question is your board of review, why the increase there?
Because I have seven thousand three hundred residential parcels that adjusted this year. Again, we're projecting a higher protest with seven thousand parcels with a comparable. Maybe, we sent out maybe fifteen hundred notices on average for, you know, whether it be new construction or just permits, whereas this is just on my urban revaluation that I did this summer.
On the residential side?
Yes. Yep.
How often can that be done?
Every two years.
Okay, but the, the protests have to be just once per year?
Yep.
So, basically, you're swapping legal for the, for other salaries, basically?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm projecting that my board of review might be in here a little bit longer this year with protest. Also, I feel, I, that they are a little bit underpaid as well as for what they do. I mean, it's, majority, by the time they actually get in here and do their job, they're doing it for free. So, I, I probably will give them a little bit of an increase this year as well.
Something that would be beneficial, at least from my perspective, I don't know how everybody else feels, but Judy's taken minutes. Judy, Judy, if you just make note that Beardmore requests that for next year, I'd like to see some actuarials, you know, with, with our departments that we do here. We can do a running three-year, you know, we can see what our expenses have been doing. And from, from my perspective, that would be most beneficial for me.
Okay.
So, I, I'd like to have those for conference board next year.
Any other questions or comments regarding the expense fund? Now, in order for a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. With, with the salary adjustment for the budget.
You want to write with that?
Correct.
Got a motion on the floor, need a second?
I'll set.
Diane, seconds? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the next item is the board of review appointments. John Hyland is asked for a reappointment?
Correct.
Has he, was he accepted?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint John Hyland.
Got a motion on the floor, need a second? Okay, we're gonna need a second. All in favor of the board of review appointment of John Hyland? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, that goes down, gets us down to the last item on the agenda, is to set the date in the night for the public hearing, March second, two thousand fifteen. We need to put a timeline on that.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
Yeah.
So moved. Okay, you got a motion, need a second? Public hearing, need a long second? Okay, Diane, seconds? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Brian.
Anything else, Brian?
I know. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Harvey.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Harvey.
Sorry, I, I got you in a pickle there.
Oh, what the heck. Well... Better stay safe than sorry. Oh, yeah.
That's kind of, we kind of feel it.
I just wish there'd be some more mayor show up.
Yeah.
And you look at the minutes of the last meeting, you were here at the last one too, Harvey, so thanks again.
Thanks, Harvey.
Thank you, Harvey.
We need those forms.
Yep.
Okay, now we'll go back to the regular agenda. We'll have a board meeting to order. We've got the agenda ahead of us. We need to add a plat. Anything else we need to add?
I laid a resignation.
Resignation.
Our retirement letter from the sheriff's office. We could probably add that to acknowledge that receipt of that.
So, you got two additions? I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of the plat and the resignation letter from the sheriff's office. Okay, you got a motion, need a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That, we've got the minutes from the last board meeting.
Also moved. They look quite a bit...
I'll second.
Which meeting?
Do we want to do what, do we need separate?
We have two meetings.
We should.
I'll do the first one.
Okay. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have the Wednesday evening meeting, we'd like a motion to approve that one also. So, no, need a second? Second. Okay, motion, a second, to approve the Wednesday evening minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion, please. Okay, with that, over to the first item on the agenda is the Rolling Hills County District.
You look familiar.
Yeah, I haven't been here for a while.
Nice to see you.
Hi, Don.
Hi, how are you?
Always waving, I go by, but you never wave back.
I haven't seen you lately, Gene.
I know.
I have a, just an outline that I was going to visit with you about today. I'll pass it around before I start.
We have reinforcements today, too.
I guess, you know, we should all go around and do interactions, you got some basic numbers.
Sure.
Go ahead, start off, Gene.
I'm Gene Miners, Sheriff of County Two, advisor District Three.
Neil Block.
District One. Okay, Marty Danley.
Mark Beardmore.
Dean Shutter.
I think it's five, last I checked. There's been some redistricting.
Okay, as you're aware, Cherokee County came into the region January first of this year, and with that, the region had to revise our management plan to include Cherokee County for annual service and budget plan, and also our regional budget. And so it was a little bit of an undertaking to bring that on in a very quick timeframe. But our revised fiscal year two thousand fifteen expenditures with Cherokee County added are two million seven hundred ninety-four thousand forty-six, which is an increase over what we had budgeted at two million six hundred twenty-three thousand thirty-three. So, with them coming in, the six months expenditures averages about a hundred and seventy-one thousand that we're expecting for Cherokee County for the next six months. And our budget has been preliminarily reviewed by the governance board at our January meeting, and I am projecting expenditures for two thousand sixteen at two million eight hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred and seven. And the governance board meets on February twenty-sixth, and will be taking action on either approving or requesting modifications to the fiscal year sixteen budget. And with our revenue next year, because if you recall, that the per capita contribution at our equal forty-seven twenty-eight, that was only set for two years, and if the legislature does not take any action on the forty-seven twenty-eight, we're back to our old levies, except for those counties that came down. So, for Carroll County coming down to forty-seven twenty-eight, that is your new max levy. Our new max levy for Buena Vista County is six hundred sixty-nine five twelve, which was our nineteen ninety-six base year levy. So, what happened, when we looked at levies throughout the region, we are averaging anywhere from thirty-three at BV's low levy, up to, or thirty-two fifty-five, up to Sack County at the highest at forty-nine. So, they actually had to come down as well. So, the governance board, I had given them several scenarios to look at in order to make a determination on where they want to set the contribution for next year. Anywhere from the lowest at thirty-two fifty-five, up to the forty-seven twenty-eight for those counties that could provide the forty-seven twenty-eight. And they did decide at the January meeting to set the contribution for next year at thirty-five per capita. That revenue totals three million five hundred sixty-seven thousand nine seventy-two. So, we have a little bit of flexibility in terms of our expenditures for next year. I wanted to point out that our budget does include three percent across the board provider rate increases. I wanted to include a little bit of funding in there for requests that come in when we start doing our contracts, and that any request for rate increase, according to our contracts has, and our twenty-eighty and plan, it has to be justified by some kind of a financial cost report, or just some justification. It cannot be an arbitrary request. But we do have that three percent budgeted in. I also included some funding for the crisis stabilization home that we are looking to pursue within our region. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later. But I did add three hundred thousand to our budget for the startup cost of a crisis home. And then the cost of an additional coordinator, because with Cherokee County joining on Lisa Bringle, who is their CPC, we're going to be contracting with her next year for eighty percent of her time. And we've done some restructuring with the way the counties are set up and the coordinators. You know, we thought that three and three would be a fair way to split up the coordinator duties as far as counties, and that's worked pretty well overall, but there has been some overlapping that we've, we've seen with Louise Galbraith coming over to Carroll County twice a week. There are cases where she's involved, and then we also have Rosie Stotts, who's contracted with the region for some social work time. So, there tends to be, you know, too many people involved at times with different cases, and I think just to eliminate some of that, we're going to have Rosie be the social work coordinator for the region starting July first. And then Louise would be the main contact as far as a coordinator, if, you know, she can be there to, you know, for Rosie to consult with. And then Rose, or Louise will have Ida in Crawford County as her main counties, and then Lisa Bringle would cover Cherokee and Buena Vista, and then Lisa Mayer would just go back to Sack and Calhoun. And then it's going to eliminate some travel time that we're paying for now with our Calhoun person, Lisa Mayer, coming up to Buena Vista a couple times a week. We're not gonna be paying that cost. And she also is going up to all of our RCF facilities in Okoboji and Lamars and Primgar to see clients that we're paying for in those facilities. So, we're going to have Lisa do that, and she's in close proximity. So, hopefully, it'll eliminate some of that travel expense.
So, which counties do not have a disability coordinator services stopping weekly or on a regular basis?
On a regular basis. There won't be in any county that doesn't. Rosie is here every day, so then Louise would just be a contact for Rosie, and if the providers had, you know, something that Rosie couldn't answer, then Rosie would be able to consult with Louise. So...
Do all the counties other than Carroll actually have Lisa or Lisa or Louise stopping on a regular basis?
Right, right. And I think Louise has found that even coming over to Carroll, it hasn't been problematic for her by any means, but everything that she's doing, she can be doing from her office in Dennis, and if we can eliminate some of that travel expense, I think that would be ideal. So...
Right. Well, I just want to point that out, and I'm very, very willing to work with that scenario. I, I just wanted to make it clear that we're the only county that doesn't have a true coordinator disability services.
And that has not been approved yet, though, Neil, because that has to be decided upon when we do the budget at the end of the month. So, if, if you're not comfortable with that, we definitely can, you know, make some changes.
I, I just want to make it more of it. At this time, I, I am comfortable with it. I, I know Louise, when she was here, when they call her, she does an excellent job. So, I think it's gonna work out, but I just want her more to be aware that we're the only county that doesn't have one on a schedule on a regular basis. And I, I feel quite comfortable that when we call Louise Galbraith, she's gonna be very responsive, but...
Yeah, she will be.
That's yet to be proven, but I, I feel that it will happen.
I'd only like to add that it's been shared with Neil and I that Rosie's workload has increased significantly, I think quote unquote was the words that were used, and I just wouldn't want to be putting, you know, too much on her if, again, we're cost sharing a coordinator that could be alleviating some of that. It's my understanding that it hasn't been only the region responsibilities, but something I want to talk about here later, and that being plans.
Okay.
But I, I would appreciate your having that conversation with Louise and Rosie. Would you agree?
Sure, sure.
Sure, I can do that. I, I guess, I have talked with Justin when he was looking at salary percentages, and he did mention that Rosie appears to be really busy doing social work stuff for the region. I have not heard that directly from Rosie, so I would want to talk with her and have her share her perspective as far as, is it different than what it was before, or do you feel it's the same? And if that, that conversation needs to happen pretty soon, because I would assume that you would expect that the region would reimburse a higher amount of her salary if that's the case. So, and with the coordinator duties changing, I do want to point out that I'm looking at this on a more long-term basis as far as what the coordinators will be doing for the region. Eventually, we're going to get to the point of some of our non-core services that they are coordinating now are gonna be very minimal, and as far as access. So, I really think that we need to think about what we can do, have the coordinators do for the region, to expand their duties a little bit beyond what they're doing now. Our jail diversion, we are right now starting a program in Crawford County, and we're looking, we're trying to get Sack and Calhoun on board with doing it as well. We're having some difficulty with magistrate. It kind of, I shouldn't say difficulty, but he hasn't had the buy-in that the Crawford County magistrates have so far. So, having the coordinators do more of the social work follows along support for the inmates after their release. And then Lisa Bringle, we are designating her for the region to work with providers on the evidence-based practice implementation. We have not gotten started with that yet. So, even though they're going down a county, we're not looking at them going down in their duties. We're just changing their duties so that we can meet some of the needs of the region. Any other questions about budget issues before I go on? I know you have a public hearing at ten, I saw on the agenda, so I will try to talk fast. ID waiver waiting list. We found out two days before January first, when the Department of Human Services decided to implement a waiting list, that it would be effective January first. We did receive on January twenty-eighth a letter from Homer's assistant, Jennifer Harbison, indicating that is the expectation of the Department of Human Services, that the regions would fund services for individuals on the ID waiver waiting list. This could become very costly. If you recall back to prior to two thousand twelve, when the state took over our Medicaid costs, and then they retained all of our dollars, counties were having financial difficulties paying for forty percent of the cost of those services, that non-federal share, and the expectation on the department is that we pay a hundred percent of these waiver services while someone's on a waiting list. How long do we think the waiting list is going to be in effect? would fund services for individuals on the ID waiver waiting list. This could become very costly. If you recall back to prior to two thousand twelve, when the state took over our Medicaid costs, and then they retained all of our dollars, counties were having financial difficulties paying for forty percent of the cost of those services, that non-federal share. And the expectation on the department is that we pay a hundred percent of these waiver services while someone's on a waiting list. How long do we think the waiting list is going to be in effect? My personal opinion is I don't think it will be lifted this year of two thousand fifteen. And I think it could be extended until two thousand sixteen sometime. At our last advisory board meeting at the end of January, we, Ron Demart, had approached me and asked me to get ahold of Gary Jones, who's an attorney out of Cedar Falls, who consults with the Iowa Association of Community Providers and provides a lot of legal advice and opinions. And it worked out great. She gave me his contact information, emailed him the next morning to find out if he'd be willing to give us an opinion as far as the region's expectation. And I received that last Thursday already, that his belief is that there is no requirement that region, regions fund individuals on a waiver waiting list. Rick Hecht is very adamant that this is not a responsibility, this was not part of the deal when the state took over the Medicaid dollars and retained all of our funding. And now they're expecting us to do this with just a hundred percent region dollars, and they're still retaining our funding. In addition to that, the state is, if you've heard on the governor's budget, there's no equalization being appropriated for next year. They're also scooping our ten million that we repaid in Medicaid offset. So the regions are going to be funding only with regional financing. And so I still, with this opinion from Gary Jones, I will still need to run this by Roger Saylor, the Crawford County attorney, who's been working, doing some legal stuff for the region, to make sure that he concurs with that if we get ourselves into some type of an appeal. But if we are going to be required to fund this, then it's going to stall out our efforts to move forward with any of the additional core services, because this will be very, very costly for the region.
Are we experiencing, as a region now, are we experiencing much of the waitlist?
We have no waitlist, no.
Currently?
No.
Okay.
But this is a big issue, so.
It's a huge issue.
Huge issue.
On January twenty-eighth, this Jennifer Harbison says, if they qualify for regional services, and this is talking about ID waiver, we would expect the region to fund these services. So that's their expectation. And then, as she said this, Gary Jones said, legal opinion, it's his opinion, they're not required. So we have an expectation from a high-ranking DHS employee and an attorney that works in this saying, yeah, it's maybe their expectations, but you're not required. So I'm anxious to see what response we're going to get from our.
Roger.
Roger. Yeah. Has he gotten all this information?
I need to send it to him yet today. I didn't have a chance to.
I'm anxious to hear what Roger has to say. But this is a big issue.
And this Gary Jones is very familiar with mental health and disability services arena and consults with ICP all the time. So he knows the system pretty well. So for him to get this opinion, I feel comfortable with it.
And it's all kind of floating around out there right now. Donna's done an excellent job of keeping us informed. And as far as Rick Hecht's opinion that we're going to try to take us for a ride, I'm totally on board with him, and I think the whole board concurs with that. Do you see anyone on our board that's arguing with Rick on that point?
No, I don't see that happening. You know, the other thing is, when we had our advisory board meeting, I did talk with the group about, if this is what the expectation is going to be, then we as a region should be able to draft some criteria as far as who's going to access services and who can wait. Because essentially, that's what DHS is going to do. They're looking at priority need. You have to have an urgent or emergent need to access a slot, and that's when those slots become available, to be able to release that off the waiting list. So we as regions cannot be the catch-all for everybody that needs to access services. So it's going to have to be based on some type of a criteria, not just, you know, everybody, because.
And that's exactly what DHS is saying. While we can't handle this, we're going to have waiting lists, but we expect regions to be the catch-all.
And if you think back of what those core services were, those are all services that are under the waiver.
We need to make our legislators aware that they're both served on the Human Services Committee, so. What'd you say earlier about unfunded mandates?
There's two.
Two for two today.
Okay. Another thing I wanted to make you aware of, I'm not sure if you've heard any rumblings about managed care for the Medicaid program in the state of Iowa. I was contacted by a gentleman from the state of Kansas, Centene Corporation, wanting to meet with me, which I had a meeting with him last Monday. Just, he's trying to get an understanding of how the regions operate, how they fund services, what they're required to fund, because they are very interested in bidding a contract with the state. Right now, Magellan's, Magellan, who is the Medicaid contractor from Mental Health and Behavioral Health Services, their contract expires in January of sixteen, and the governor's office is going to be releasing a request for proposal in March of this year. And it is going to encompass the entire Medicaid program. So that's, you know, pharmaceuticals, doctors, behavioral health services, intellectual disability services, all of it will be under a managed care model. And according to this gentleman that I spoke with last week, he said that the state would be required to contract with at least two managed care corporations, and that's required. And then they're hoping that they'll be able to bid one. And I don't know if Magellan would want to continue, you know, just doing the behavioral health, but it sounds like Centene's very interested in doing the whole, whole approach. And it's projected to save fifty-five million dollars in the first six months of two thousand sixteen. That also will include case management. And I know that Angela and her staff are here, probably very interested to see how this will roll out. According to Michael Hammond from Centene, he said that all he has to go on right now is, he doesn't know what the state is going to look at as far as different approaches across the United States. But Can Care is the current contractor under managed care in Kansas. And he said that he really believes that that same plan would be rolled out. And until the RFP is released, you know, he can't make any other determination. But everything under Can Care is a very holistic, integrated, health home comprehensive approach, similar to what is ruled out with our chronically mentally ill population into the integrated health homes. So I can't, you know, say what is the future of case management is going to be, but I do believe it will be impacted in some way. So task force updates. I just want to let you know that there has been a lot of work done since I came to meet with you last. Our crisis stabilization task force has really picked up momentum. They are meeting on a monthly basis now. At our December meeting, we rolled out our vision for crisis services and a very lofty timeframe to have a crisis stabilization home opened up within the region by July of this year. And what we are envisioning is a four-to-five-bed centrally located home within the region. Centrally located would be ideal. It's not going to be any make or break decision for us, but it would be nice as far as access for all of the counties. And this would be a, you know, as I mentioned earlier, when I came to meet with you, it's going to allow people that really don't meet that acute level of inpatient treatment care need to be able to voluntarily access stabilization services within a home in the community for up to three to five days, stabilize, and then return to their home. And you've probably heard that the governor's budget is, has cut funding for Clorinda and Mount Pleasant, so those hospitals are projected to close. So it's more important than ever that our region has an alternative, because we're losing that many beds in the state, when beds are already hard to come by. But yeah, I'm very excited about this opportunity. I had some, five providers indicate interest in providing crisis stabilization services, Plains Area Mental Health Center, Home Care Options here in Carroll, Mallard View, Wesco and Dennison, and then Counseling Services, who would like to be providing the mental health component of the service, but not the actual residential twenty-four hour, just partnering with a provider. So Calhoun County, we have also been able to bring services in. We have therapists and Rockwell City Office on a weekly basis now. And Plains Area is going to also be providing some telepsychiatry services, hopefully starting yet this month, but for sure by March first. Because, you know, as you recall, Calhoun County had no services other than an ICF ID provider opportunity living when the region started. Mentioned jail diversion, hoping to get that up and running to keep people from returning to the jail, stabilizing them upon their release. We're going to be doing post-booking jail diversion, not pre-booking. In order to do pre-booking, you really have to have a mobile crisis response team. And we thought the easiest way to make some progress as far as jail diversion would be to do a post-booking program. And then parent family support, those were two services, as you recall, when we did our exemption application that Carroll County didn't have. And then when we applied, you know, did our letter of intent for the region, that was the two services we were lacking. We do have that available now. Two parents from Calhoun County have taken the family-to-family training, and they are going to be starting a series of trainings. And March fifth, I believe, they start a twelve-week series. So they're going to be able to train families on different mental health issues and how to respond, how to seek treatment for a family member, and how to take care of themselves as well.
Two parents, that's the parents?
There were two parents, yes, that took the training. And they're going to be providing these trainings and eventually roll it out within the region. And we also have three individuals from Crawford County that have become peer support specialists. They need to take the certification, but they have been trained. So we have those needs met within our region currently, so. Questions for me? There has been a lot done.
A lot done, a long ways to go.
That's right.
You still talk a hundred miles an hour?
Well, I had to. You have a hearing at ten.
I know.
So there's money that, the money that they're scooping up, I assume the state, I don't take that.
It's going to cover the Medicaid shortfall. Their, last I heard, there was a hun, I've heard two different figures, one hundred seventy-three million and a hundred and fifty-nine million dollar Medicaid shortfall. So they're trying to scoop that. And then you can see, you know, the different pieces of the puzzle. The core services were part of the redesign bill that regions have to have and fund. And now they are enforcing this waiting list for the ID waiver and shifting this back to the regions potentially.
I'm only teasing you. You just talk faster than my brain compute, so that's fine. Thank you very, very much. I think we're going to share some information with you when we got a little bit more time, but.
Okay.
The, you know, the future of block granting Plains. We'd like to have some dialogue with the region. And Neil and/or I will be up there.
Okay. Yeah, feel free to call me or get in touch with me. Okay?
Thanks, Don.
No more questions?
I have written down what I want you covering, you had it.
All right.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, girls.
Thank you. Stabilization, I had that down, covered that.
Okay, just to get that light, we'll go start the public hearing for zoning ordinance change, Carl?
Good morning.
Good morning, Carl.
Let's start off with what I assume will be the shortest one, and that'd be amendment to the zoning map up at Brita. Basically, on this is a request to rezone a piece of property. It hasn't been surveyed out yet. It'd be contingent upon whether or not be allowed to rezoning on that property. And you have a map there of the piece of property. It's located adjacent to the Stock Rail Trail. And it's also then, on the other side of the trail is Brita Sewage.
Substate facility.
Treatment plant. So the request is to go from A1 to I, actually, it's I1, light industrial for storage of bulk LP tank and a building to park the delivery truck in. And we've deemed here, if any questions, if you have. This is an answer to your question on spot zoning, if that was to be to come up. Spot zoning is not illegal. It is allowed as long as you take into consideration the surrounding land uses, the effect on property, surrounding property owners. And we did have that discussion with the zoning commission and Jim Van Dyke, felt that it would be appropriate up in that area mainly because of the waste facility that's up there. And I'll let Dean speak on why he thought that property was a good choice for him.
The board of course, the zoning commission voted in the House wanting to do this. That was their recommendation. Have you had any contrary opinions?
No.
Okay. Nobody else voiced any?
No.
We discussed it at the conservation board meeting, too, and there was no concerns there either.
Very good. Now, Dean, you had made some consideration to move that tank away from the trail, just?
Well, I wanted to put, for safety sake, I wanted the tank as far from the trail as we could, and there's going to be, what, a hundred fifty, two hundred feet? And the reason I picked out of town is safety concerns. You know, it's out in the open, away from an urban area. That's long and short of the story. That's what it is.
Okay.
Who are you taking it?
It's thirty thousand gallons.
Be similar to the one in Littledale Bay on that one?
Yes, similar, yes.
Be above ground?
Yes, everything's above ground, yes.
Yeah, we have set precedence with that in that facility north of Highway thirty on Littledale Blacktop.
I've heard, you don't have to dike propane, though, do you?
You just have to pensive. You have to pensive.
Does it require a vault? Like?
No. Just have to pensive.
I like the location myself, I have heard no objections to it.
You didn't receive anything, Courtney?
No, I didn't. Nope.
It is an amendment to an ordinance, so it would require either three readings or waiving the final two.
Do we want to close the public hearing then, or are we getting another one?
Well, yeah, the other one's a separate issue, so you can close this one and.
Okay, let's go ahead and close. If there are any, no other amendments, we'll close the public hearing. And we just set a date for the first reading?
This is the first reading.
Or the second reading, I guess, second reading.
You can waive those.
Yeah, you can waive those.
I would, I would say have one more reading, just in case. And I don't expect anything come up, but then we can waive the final readings if we have no objections.
So close this one, set a second date for the second?
Yeah. So do we have to publish that again?
No.
You don't? Okay.
Can you, is Monday fine for the second reading and perhaps plan?
Tuesday.
Or Tuesday? Sorry.
I'll do that on Monday.
Yeah, we'll understand. I'll make a motion that we introduce and approve the first reading of the ordinance, the amendment, and that we set the second reading on September seventeen.
September?
No, don't.
February.
Now you got me.
That's too late, isn't it, Dean? September.
February eighteen.
Get the year right.
God, now I'm getting all screwed up.
Okay, we need a second.
Go ahead. Dean?
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say zay. Most agree. Okay, now we need to open the public hearing up again for the region?
Yeah. Thanks, Dean.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Dean. You got it.
Okay, shooting ranges, kind of an odd subject. The state code requires that, in their nuisance or, or nuisance portion of the code, says before any person improves a property acquired to establish, use, and maintain a shooting range by the erection of a building, breastwork, ramparts, or other works, or before a person substantially changes the existing use of a shooting range, the person shall obtain approval of the county zoning commission. That's in the Iowa Code six fifty-seven dot nine. The reason I say it's kind of odd is that the zoning commission, by its structure, doesn't really have any authority. They're all a recommending body to you. But that's the way the state worded it. And so what we've done in, in trying to address that is that, we talked to Jim Van Dyke and thought, well, we'll just have the zoning commission and the Board of Adjustment meet at the same time, and then both bodies can hear the same information on any proposed shooting range. And both of them vote then separately, but at least they, we get it done at the same time. We do have two shooting ranges in our jurisdiction. There are other ones in the county. We originally, when we set this up, thought that the, the shooting ranges were all on public property. And so the theory at that time was, well, we'll just put them in the public recreation district, or basically our county, county park zoning classification. And since then, we've had a couple others crop up. So we thought we better get those addressed. What the zoning commission decided to do, there were a couple options. We could either look at rezoning those properties as public recreation or areas, or we could make it a special use permit in an ag area, and that would be after Board of Adjustment public hearing. Well, it didn't make sense to, to rezone private property as public recreation. So we thought the next best alternative was to go to allowing it in an A1 district after public hearing with the Board of Adjustment. The nice thing about the Board of Adjustment is that they can not only get all, gather in the public hearing, but they can also set requirements. The nice thing about the Board of Adjustment is that they can not only get all the, gather in the public hearing, but they can also set requirements or conditions for those permits. So, let's say if it was too near a neighborhood, they could say, okay, you can't shoot after dark. Or you can't, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. They have a little more latitude in creating those type of conditions. So, the proposal from the zoning commission is to amend the zoning ordinance. And let me copy that. There's a couple that way. Get enough, get two or three there. Two, there you go. So, what we're proposing, the first one is just the, first page is just the state code. Second page has a, copied the A1 ag district. And we're proposing to add under O9, allow outdoor rifle and skeet shooting ranges according to provisions of 1404-160, which is just basically if they have to commit and apply. And this is under the special uses when authorized by Board of Adjustment section. And then under 10, we also moved, this is also in the conservation district, but we also, you can, you can put multiple things in, or same things in different districts. So, it's very common to see a zoning ordinance allows something in conservation district that's also allowed in an ag district. Or something that's in an ag district also allowed in the next level of district. So, that's basically what we're doing here, is bumping up then the privately owned country clubs, golf courses, marinas, or docking facilities, guest ranches, hunting clubs, swimming clubs, riding stables, lakes, resort is kind of a catch-all for that type of activity. Allow that in an ag district, again, after authorization of Board of Adjustment. And it can't be any closer than 200 feet from any our district or residential district. So, basically moving those two line items in it. They're also allowed in the conservation district, but allowed in A1, that's what.
I would only ask, is 200 feet enough?
It would depend on what the, again, that's why it's in the, the Board of Adjustment would hear the shooting, no. Some of the other activities, yeah, it could be. You know, if you were doing a lake type of development, not that we have a big lake sitting around here, but, you know, let's say you had a lake development. If you go to a lake, there's a lot of residential right next to the resort type of activity, so.
If the golf course, you'd want it closer than 200 feet, so it'd be right off your...
Yeah, that's right. So, it's right off your back deck, you know, yeah. So, it'd depend on what the activity was. But again, that's why you give the, the Board of Adjustment has that latitude. Well, they wouldn't do a variance, they would do a condition, saying that, yeah, you can do this, but you're gonna have to be, you know, 1,000 feet from the residence or whatever that is.
So, everything would still have to go through the Board of Adjustment?
Right.
No matter what? There would not be a cart plant?
No, 'cause especially with this type of activity, you want public input or you want the surrounding neighbors' input.
Well, again, it's your January meeting, Arizona Zoning Commission Board of Adjustments, likely to approve this, Senate test. I have not heard any negative comments, have you, Carl?
No.
Okay. And somebody's, Royce, all this has been going on for a while and I don't, I've heard nothing but fun times coming.
I have too. And the zoning commission was very clear that they don't object to that activity.
Yeah.
You know, that we just want to address, you know, getting it in the proper place in the ordinance. And then we will require Royce and another one down there, Coon, to go through the process.
Does this include a private one that would just be, how many people, a barn?
Yeah, 'cause the state code says, as long as, you know, if you go out there and you set up a target next to a hill and go shooting, that's fine. And if you wanna throw clay pigeons and do that, it's fine. But as soon as you move dirt, you gotta get, you gotta get approved by the zoning commission. So, we're just getting that.
So, if you don't move dirt, it's all right?
Yeah. Quite good state. I mean, you know, there's lots of people go out and shoot in somebody's pasture timber, you know, just to target practice.
Sometimes in the barn.
Yeah, or whatever, but, but yeah, as soon as you start moving dirt and laying concrete or something, then...
Does it make any difference how many people show up to do this?
No. Not according to state code.
You could have 50 people come out to your barn and shoot?
That's, that's the way we understand it, yeah.
Okay, what's the permit gonna involve?
That's go through the Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Adjustment, a public hearing is $100 to cover the cost of the publications.
One-time cost?
Yeah.
And the permits forever?
Yeah.
Another rule of regulation.
Yeah, well, we didn't, we didn't write it.
I know, you didn't write it.
Royce, do you have any comments or concerns? I'll answer any questions if there are any.
I feel bad that you got $100, you're not too bad here. I guess, like that, but that's what I did. I have to comment on the recreation, the unit's done for the county, I mean, the kids and skeet shooting, that gives them that, gives them something to do. I commend you on what you're doing. We are a nonprofit organization, so.
Would this $100 cover both, the publishers, cover both shooting clubs? Or would each one have to be listed separately?
Well, I'll tell you what, these guys are the ones that set the fees, so.
Well, you know, why not if they can get it both under the same publication?
It's fine with me.
That makes sense, they can split the cost, it's not, why double the cost? That would be my, my pick. I mean, I understand you need to cover your costs, but we don't want you, it's not the device to make money either.
And I'm representing George Johnson for Eric Shooting Club, which I'm a member of. If you guys have any questions to me whatsoever.
Yeah, it's just North of Coon Rapids.
Depends on the day.
Depends on who you ask.
So, anytime in the future, if another shooting, they would have to?
They'd have to go through this process.
Go through this process again. Okay.
And I thought I knew, I have a code, but Chapter 6, whatever it was, slipped through my grasp.
Yes, that's the nuisance code, so.
You know where George's farm's at, North Coon? It's right behind the shop there. Right to the North Coon Shop. And we're nonprofit also, just, when he lost his one son, he was an avid shooter and he got together a few people and started up a rapid skeet house.
So, did you guys have to move dirt? A little bit.
Yeah.
Any other questions or amendments?
So, what's the, what's the next process that the Board of Adjustments here assesses?
Well, we have to get this passed first. And again, it's an amendment to the ordinance, so it does require three readings or waiving the second two. And then, yeah, I'll send you notice when we'll have the Board of Adjustment meeting.
Okay.
Probably be in March.
If there's nothing else, are we ordered to close the public hearing? No other questions? Okay, closed public hearing? Okay, now we need a motion to approve first reading and set the second, or another second? I would parallel this to our previous motion that we set, approve this reading and set the second reading at the same time the other one is, so they're both together. You got a motion to be a second?
I'll second it. There was, I think, a meal? Uh, Tuesday.
Oh, not Tuesday, Thursday, 17th.
That's just, that's our second reading on this.
But it still goes back to the BOA, right?
Right.
That one does, yeah.
And typically, just 'cause I know I gotta sit here for another budget thing, I would shoot for like the fourth Thursday in March in the evening. 'Cause we're not in a hurry. I mean, it's not a, you know, sample shoot thing we gotta get done right away.
Was that fun? Was it fun that you're gonna shoot?
No. No fun intended.
We're sharp this morning.
We were at some suburbage and we had skeet and rifle range. There is skeet trap, sporting plays, bunker trap. How about clay targets? And, and then there's also pistol ranges.
Okay, well, that's what this is about, so.
We need to add that to the wording.
If we, if you, why don't you send me an email with that in it? We'll pull, bring it into the next public hearing.
Maybe add that to the next reading?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
That should do it for the public hearing on the chairman of the board.
Should we vote?
Yeah, we need, we need a motion in the second, we need to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say zay. So, next meeting will be next Tuesday, give a second reading and then just a portmuller.
Good.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Thanks again. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll get on to the third item, it'll be IT and planning, zoning, budget review, Carl?
Which one do you want? The good news or the? The zoning, zoning budget? You got a copy of that? It's very, very simple. I just put in a 2.5% raise and the insurance increase of Courtney, or the dollars equivalent. We didn't used to have insurance in the zoning line item. I think last year was the first time it got split out.
Yeah, the software does that because your salary's coming out of two different places.
So, that's why it's been made, I think, just last year or this year. But, again, it's just 2.5% on the salary. And I didn't change anything else except for the insurance. There's bike and diapers changed, but...
Got them.
I didn't forget those, though.
Any questions on the zoning? Really, the, we don't have a lot of expense there. We do have, you know, some publication expenses and then meeting expenses. And the only, the other one there that has planning services, that's if we would do a big comprehensive plan update or something like that, which I don't have in the works. On the IT side, again, put in 2.5% increase and the health insurance, again, that numbers Courtney gave. One thing I don't like about this form is it didn't show you percentage increases.
I saw that too.
Yeah, you know, everybody probably has. That's why I print my own out, so I kinda know where I'm at. Looking at travel expenses, that would be... Yeah. Went from 2,000 to 3,000. I was using that old car of the shell, had used with environmental health. That's gone out to the sale barn. And so, I don't have a vehicle to drive, so I have no idea what the mileage impact's gonna be, so I just put some more in there to... 'Cause it'll cost more than just buying gas, so. That's why that was increased. Telephone telegraph service went from 38 to 57. Part of that is the additional T-LAN, the bandwidth going out to the engineer. Now, we kinda talked about that earlier this year, having to increase that pipe size and went from 50 meg to 100 meg to do the backups because it was peak, it was peaking out our, our bandwidth going out there. It's still not quite big enough, but not enough to go another...
Which item was that, Carl?
That would be telephone telegraph, that's where we've got that in. Data processing services, again, that's got Luis in there and like Image Tech, anybody who would come in to do... It's not an annual support payment, it's like a one-time, bring them in. And that, Luis, we just, I just increased that 2.5 as well. The big kicker, office data processing, went from 61,110 to 90,000. And O'Neil and Mark, when you were in my office...
It changed.
It changed. Well, Courtney, Courtney got a bill from Tyler. And we have a, we have an annual support cost for INCODE and used to be the old GT program. And that ran about, well, I budgeted 30,000 for that. That was 5% more than last year. And Courtney shows up in my office with a bill for about $20,000 from Tyler for the version 10 support. And we do have a, we looked it up and there's a contract, five-year contract that, I think it's $19,698 a year for the next five years on that program. And I assume at the end of the five years, they'll do it again, but, or probably raise it at that point. But it's level for at least that portion is level for the next five years. So, we plugged it back into the budget.
You thought it was going away?
I didn't, I really didn't think about it. This is the first time we've gotten a bill since we put the program out.
Well, and the contract was signed how many years ago?
Yeah, I don't know. Mark, you signed it.
Well, yeah, because we delayed it twice to even install.
So, kinda, it was not on my radar.
And you guys can kinda remember that I did my best to contest that.
So, this is all Tyler, right?
No, it's not all Tyler, but a big chunk of it.
20,000 of it.
About 50,000 of it is.
Oh, 50,000.
The rest of it's gonna be like, Image Tech does have a, an annual support fee. And it would be like Sidwell, any of those, you know, like our antivirus and those kinda, any kinda support dealt would be in here for the servers and things like that. They'd all be lumped into that line item.
How do you determine what support IT budget picks up versus, like we did the assessor's this morning, and his jumped quite a little bit too. And I know Sidwell was part of that.
Yeah, well, I pick up...
How do you determine?
It's kind of a split, unlike the Sidwell stuff. I pick up the Sidwell mapping website, 'cause it affects more than just the assessor's office. Same way with Tyler bill. You know, financial, real estate, you know, that's the auditor, the assessor, the treasurer, and the recorder, 'cause it's got the recording index in it, my office. So, basically on those support costs, I just pick it up so that we just have one payout, 'cause it affects everybody. You know, it affects the engineer's office, you know, 'cause they use it too. So, that's kinda the way we've done it.
You know, I mean, it's probably a silly question, but I mean, we're, we're pretty certain there's not two invoices being sent out for the same thing.
Like, like Cameavision, I don't do, that's all assessor. So, it comes out of his budget.
And he said he pays for Tyler, but he doesn't.
No, he doesn't.
I was gonna say that, and he doesn't pay a Tyler bill. It all comes to my office or Carl's.
Unless he's getting some kinda support or something from them that he may get a direct bill.
It'd be extra, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think so. And then the last item, data processing equipment. I did put, I did put 20,000 in there. My copier, multi-function printer, and my plotter are both, well, I got that multi-function printer when Jeff Albert was the emergency management guy. So, that's been... So that's been, uh, at least ten.
Two guys ago.
Yeah, two guys ago. And, uh, and my printer, or my plotter, I think I got it in two thousand and two. You know, so they're getting pretty, uh, pretty well-worn. So I did put money in there to replace those two in the next fiscal year. But we aren't gonna replace any servers or sands or anything like that, so. That's in our, give our fingers crossed.
Okay.
Nope.
That's about it.
All right. Tyler. Our favorite, our favorite word.
Hey.
Okay, we'll go down to the next item, which is DHS budget review.
Morning.
Good morning.
Buddy up by two, next two years.
That's no problem.
Yes, we could try to interdate.
Yeah, sure.
Dean Shutter, District Two Supervisor.
Oh, Mark Moore, District Five.
He faked me out.
Neil Block, District One.
Jane Miners, District Three.
Well, Matt Metz with Department of Human Services in the Western Iowa Service area. How's that? Uh, we have thirty counties, so it's probably, what, a hundred and fifty districts, and each county has five supervisors.
And I'm Carol Tool. I'm the supervisor for DHS, and Carol.
And, and I, well, I apologize right up front. I don't have, I used to bring a nice handout for you guys that showed how much, uh, all the work that Carol's staff does brings back to Carol County in terms of benefits of food assistance and Medicaid primarily. And I, somebody retired and we just are gonna offer a new person that position here pretty soon, so I don't have that handy report to give you. So I apologize for that. Maybe you weren't looking forward to it at all. But, uh, I, boards generally tend to like it. You, you probably have this in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay. There's some, like, one year we forgot to make copies, so. I don't know if you wanna.
No, that's okay.
Okay. The, uh, and I, I mentioned that report because that, that's always my intro to say how grateful we are for the, uh, space, the good, green, terrific workspace we have, um, for our staff to work here, you know, in Carol County and kind of serve as a hub for this part of the state, for us anyway. So we're, we're grateful for that. You know, Carol and I, as we worked on this, we basically were asking for less money next year. I don't know if you want the bottom line. I think that the request for this coming year is eighty-eight thousand, three hundred, and last year was ninety-five, five. Carol's telling me a couple of the, the major changes would be the postage, uh, Carol renegotiated the postage contract.
Yeah, and we use considerably less postage now that we're electronic. Everything is typically done through email, so.
That's, that's really changed in almost all our offices, you know, we've worked with. We have twelve of our thirty counties are full-time offices. Really, we've seen costs almost across the board kind of continue to drop down county by county. So it makes it easier to come see county boards when, when that's going on. And then telephone, we dropped a little bit also. Those probably, like, those, really those two numbers accounted for most of the change. I did include, uh, revenue for next year. Your revenue is, you folks, of course, have a contract that Cost Advisory Services comes and does a, uh, a study and then they generate a rate, uh, what's called an indirect rate, that the work that Courtney's office and other county offices do that helps support us, that you get some credit for that. And the county attorney is the primary driver of that. They're, they're the biggest number in that. And so we can tack that on to, we take our, what you spend on us and all these budget items. And the money that, even though it's not in the budget, when the maintenance people come over, they send us an invoice each month and we keep track of their time and tack that on to the bill to drive the revenue. So you don't have to budget for it, as long as you spend it out, you know, you'll get reimbursed for it. So the, uh, their indirect rate and added with the direct expenses, you know, I've estimated forty-four thousand for next year for reimbursement from us. Frankly, I always undershoot that. I don't think I've ever overestimated that in any of the counties ever, because it's a really bad idea. So that'll, but that's what I'm saying is forty-four thousand. And you still have agreements with SAC, Audubon, Guthrie and Green Counties to pay you some money for Vanessa's housing, some of our folks who provide services in those counties. I'll tell you, that's, uh, an arrangement that's unique. In other counties around the state, or in our service area, I said, how can we do something like that? And we encouraged county boards to work together on that. So, um, that's, that's beneficial. And the other counties, I haven't heard a word from anyone that says that, that they don't want to continue that. And I, I don't ask them, because that's really an agreement between the counties. So our reimbursement added to what you get from the counties, I think, will have revenue of fifty-one thousand, seven sixty next year. And again, that's, you know, I'm really firm on the seventy-seven sixty, because that's hard to pass. Forty-four thousand probably is a little long.
Forty-four stuck in two years?
Yeah, it's in the auditor's revenue and it's not that way forever. And, you know, this is all one pool, so I'm not sure why it's in there, but that's where it's always been.
And we physically take the check to the treasurer, because that's, obviously, that's how. But then, once it gets to the county, yeah, that's, we, but, uh, so we, you know, really, we think it's pretty economical as a net for thirty-six thousand and a half to, to run our office and actually probably lower than that. Because expenses will probably be lower and revenue will likely be higher.
Very good.
Yeah, very good, yeah.
You covered everything.
Well, and you say very good, but you should be looking at Carol when we say that and not at me. Because really, it's, she, you know, she, besides Carol County, you know, Carol's responsible in the same way and kind of a major way for Buena Vista County as well. So she's taken on that role, so she travels back and forth between. And, um, that's just, I don't know, that's been, I, I think we're.
It's been a long time.
It's, and it's been a process, you know.
I actually cover Carol, Green, Guthrie, Audubon, SAC, Crawford, Ida, Cherokee and BB. But only two full-time offices, so that helps me out.
So, yes, when we say very good, it starts there, starts with Carol.
And we really do appreciate it. I mean, the building is just fantastic. We haven't had any issues. I hope you're not hearing anything from consumers in the county that, I mean, we're doing, we certainly have, um, with the Affordable Care Act, we certainly have a backlog of applications that we're currently working on. People are working overtime to get those caught up. So if you hear things from consumers, it's not that, they're probably not legitimate complaints, but we're, we're certainly doing our best to get all of that picked up. In fact, I think we have the lowest backlog of cases in the state, so, you know, we're in a better position than a lot of counties, but.
And often as a reward, we get more cases the more time.
That's true. That's true.
We could have a future need for more space.
Well, we just lost a worker to retirement, so I'm down one worker here. So we do have probably, I would say, four offices upstairs that don't have anyone in them currently. And I'm not seeing that we're gonna be hiring anybody for our area anytime soon, at least in the income maintenance side. I'm not sure about social work side of things.
And the social work, number of social work staff will probably stay pretty similar. You know, we, we have them positioned, so particularly our investigators, the people that investigate child abuse. So we need to have them somewhat centrally located, so they can go out and make contact with families sometimes in an hour, hours' time. And often, of course, that might come at night too, so. But we really probably won't change the number of social workers much, because if we moved them from, I doubt we'd move them away from here. You know, I can't think of where else we would go.
Need for expansion sometime. Just near future, I don't know.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sure will. It's a wonderful place to work. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good week.
Have a good day.
Okay, we'll go down to the next item, which is fiscal sixteen council information board. It's budget review, Jason.
Good morning, Jase.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jason.
Apologize first, I'm trying to get over a cold, so my voice is a little going. I think everybody's had it, so. All right. We're gonna look at general first. On the revenue side of things, kept things fairly similar. Camping fees, I'm gonna leave at a hundred thousand. This past camping year, we put a hundred and six thousand back into the general fund. We had some long-term camping with our windmill project and some other stuff, so I'm gonna leave that one right at a hundred thousand. I did knock back our concession stand a little bit. That's been at ten thousand. We just really don't bring in quite that much, so I bumped that one back to eight thousand. Everything else, I left the same. On the expense side, as far as salaries, I just figured in two and a half percent for now. Salaries for part-time, that would be like our concession stand help and our associate naturalist or naturalist intern. Left those the same. Bike and diapers. As far as insurance, I use Courtney's numbers for insurance for now. Moving down, everything's pretty similar down on, under office equipment. Put a little extra in office equipment. So I want to purchase a new desk this year and a couple of file cabinets, so I upped that a little bit. Part-time salaries, those would be for our seasonal maintenance workers, our college interns in our two seasonal mowing positions. At the beginning of last year, we still had Butch Golitzer working for us. He's since retired, so a new person we hire, obviously, we won't pay him what Butch was making right off the bat, so. We went down, down on that.
We had diff, you said you had difficulty getting part-time people to mow?
It's tough. I mean, it's college kids, it's, we get about enough applicants to hire four kids and that's, we have four to five applicants usually, so. We're looking at, gonna pay them a little bit more. We usually started them out at nine. I think we're gonna start them out at nine fifty. And we still are gonna be decreasing that line item, so we'll see if that changes anything. Under feed and livestock and poultry, we went down on the feed. And with the livestock and poultry, obviously with the petting zoo gone, we, we don't need that anymore, so. Basically, our feed would just be for corn, for our bison, some protein for our swans, that kind of stuff. Concession gift shop expenses, we've always had five thousand in there. I bumped that back to four, because we just don't spend quite five thousand there on expenses, so. The very bottom, natural gas LP, I went up a little bit on that. Previous year, we were above budget, so I just went up a little bit on that one. Our water bill, I went down a little bit. We've had some big water bills this year, but I think we, we've determined we've got a couple of water leaks out there. We were having like eleven hundred dollar water bills and our last two, one was eighty-one dollars and one was a hundred and one dollars, so. I think we, we're gonna work with the city in the spring when we start turning water back on, try to isolate where those leaks are at and get those fixed before we get back into the camping season, so. Equipment repairs, this is one I added.
You know, backup to that water thing. Is yours lines all steel?
We've got, that's part of our issue out there. We've got everything from galvanized pipe in the ground yet to, uh, black poly pipe, PVC pipe. And that's a lot of what we run into.
Then you got problems.
Right. And we're looking at, we think we've isolated an area, well, we know we've got one hydrant, the campground leak, and we did find that. And also, when we shut another area off, there's a water line that runs kind of behind where the cabin is. Goes out and feeds the south shelter. There's a bunch of galvanized pipe in that line, and we've dug that up several times. It's only about two feet deep. So I think, rather than keep monkeying with that, we might just trench a new line in, hit what we need to catch along there and, and be done with it instead of keeping having problems, but.
Well, I guess it's all steel, there's, there's ways they can sound that too.
Yeah, and we, we checked with that, because when I first started, we had a leak over at the east shelter. We finally found, well, the lake was down, we were in a drought. That line evidently found a vein or something to the lake and never surfaced. But it was a two-inch line that was completely broke, so it was pumping two-inch line water continually. But we finally, we finally figured it out, isolating valves and different things, but we checked into that with the city, because the city uses those guys, and they said with plastic pipe, it's almost impossible to, to trace anything, so.
Were you able to do anything on the, uh, we had talked about the McFarland shut off the valve?
And that's as far as they, the city goes with the water, so that's where they want their meter. Because our meter sits right at McFarland Clinic, and then the line from McFarland Clinic out to the park and all the way around the park is all our stuff, so.
So if there's a break anywhere after that meter, that's.
That's our responsibility, yes.
So if it's in the ditch, um, you know, basically.
And that's all PVCs.
It's on the west side of the road, isn't it?
West side of the road, yeah.
Doesn't sound right to me, but, I mean, I would think that would be theirs up to a point, to a point that's our property, I guess. That's what I.
So is it city water or rural water that you have out there?
We have city water.
City water.
City water. Doesn't, uh, okay. Somehow I thought the, you had rural water out there. Rural water, I don't know, it's all city. Rural gas, though.
Natural gas. Well, part of the park's on natural gas and parts, the east side of the park is on natural gas, because we've got a, a tap on that line coming down that back road into the park. That feeds Bill's house, the shop and our east shelter. John's house and our bathrooms in the campground for the water heaters, that's all on propane. The head center geothermal.
You know, thinking out loud there, is there a rural water line on the east side of the lake there, running down the road on the east side?
I think it comes to that corner on Grant Road there. I think it comes to that corner.
Would it be worth checking in to hook it up, everything on the east side of the lake, rural water?
You think it comes around Grant Road?
I think there's a valve on the corner there.
That'd be on the west side.
I'm talking on the east side for the east shelter.
You think there is one there?
Well, I don't know on the east side.
He thinks, he thinks there's one on the west side, probably right at that intersection there?
I think so. I think it comes up.
So that, that shut off would actually be closer to us than the city's.
And I don't know, um, for what the rate the city gives us, because we don't pay sewer or anything, you know, like you do in town, so it's just strictly water, so we'd have to check on what their rate is versus rural water's rate, but.
I think there's a line on the east side of us.
There could be. I'd, I'd have to check with them and see. Okay. All right, going back down. Equipment repairs, obviously where we're at, we had that budget amendment that upped that to fix that tractor. So last year, this current budget year, I did have, I had twenty-five thousand budgeted. I bumped that up to thirty, just because that's kind of roughly looking historically what we're spending on equipment repairs. To be a more realistic number, I guess. You know, we've got Dan out there and he does a great job keeping our equipment up. You know, he's finding a lot of things by going through equipment. It's gonna cause us to not have major breakdowns in the future, or.
Preventative.
So I think, I mean, I think it's money well spent on keeping equipment running well and not having major breakdowns and. Sanitation and disposal, I went down on that a little bit. Down to head center cleaning, we have increased our cleaning, cleaning staff out there. Increased what they get for like four years, if I look back right, so. Increase there, what they get a little bit. And they do a good job. They, they're required to come out at least twice a week, but they do, they come out, you know, if we've got two events back to back, they'll make an exception and come out and clean between those events on their own and that kind of stuff, so they, they do a good job for us, so.
Jason, what's the salaries part-time on page one versus the salaries part-time on page two?
Salaries part-time on page one, that includes our concession stand workers and our intern naturalist position. And then the ones on page two are our four summer interns, our college interns we hire, and then our two part-time mowing positions.
I was just gonna say, looking at, at the past, looks like we spent about nine, nine. Looks like this year's headed upwards, but then we're not gonna get into much of summer until after that's over.
Right.
Is there any potential for a reduction there on that line?
Well, I know the last, the last couple of years are, the intern naturalists that we've had hasn't worked the amount of hours that we've, we've put out there. They've gone back to school early or something. Because we like to try to keep them a little bit into fall if we can, depending on who we get. And that's kind of, if it's a college person, obviously, they gotta go back to school in the fall. So that's why we left it at that. If, you know, if we would get somebody that could work, you know, a couple extra. If, you know, if we would get somebody that could work, you know, a couple extra, two or three weeks into fall, after school is back, that's kind of why we're at that, at that number.
In regards to your concession, I, it just appears it's a money-losing situation there. I don't know if it is or not. I, I look at your revenue and you got thirteen thousand for salary, which is more than concessions, and then there's a four thousand dollar for supplies for concessions. It appears not to be a very profitable and probably possibly losing proposition out there.
And I've got the numbers, Valerie's worked up the numbers. I think we were to the plus side, and I don't have the exact sheet in front of me, but it was a couple of thousand dollars to the plus side.
Maybe just a little bit.
So it's not a huge moneymaker, no.
Yeah, and, and maybe it's, maybe it makes money by the token of being a good to have campers like to go to places where they got concessions, maybe you make the money on the camper side, but if it's just gonna make a small amount, maybe you can make more money if you had vending machines and maybe the camp hosts have ice and firewood and a few essentials like that, I don't know.
Right, and our campground hosts do sell ice and firewood.
And, yeah, I don't, okay, if it's making some money, that's all right.
Yeah.
It looked like.
That was kind of the thing when we, you know, when they built the education center because the concession stand used to be over, you know, a little more accessible than it is now. Where now you have to come across the road and go down the basement of the head center and it's not quite as accessible as you, so that's, I would attribute some of that to that, I guess.
I think due to the lack of convenience, I think a lot of people just drive to town when they, something.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I know one time it used to be privately operated and you made nothing of that, but.
Yeah, they used to have a private person on it, yep. There's more questions on that, we can move to capital. Obviously, on capital this year, the big thing's gonna be the trail. As far as revenues, everything should be pretty similar as far as trail fees, land rent, CRP, that stuff should stay similar because we're still in the same, same renter. There is two hundred and fifty thousand in there, that will be the, the region twelve grant we got for the trail work. Also, if you look down, there's a ten thousand dollar under donations, that's the Pheasants Forever contribution to the Tigus land purchase, contributing ten thousand dollars a year till that's paid off, so.
What, what is the balance on that Tigus property here? You pay, you're looking to pay another forty thousand on it, is that what you got?
Well, yeah, the, the loan is, it's a fifty thousand, like fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year, so we take forty out of, well, it's gonna be fifty, but actually forty out of capital and the ten thousand dollar donation from PF will make that fifty thousand. Then we also put out of REAP, we take like fifteen thousand out of REAP and we'll look at that one next, but, to kind of pay ahead on it a little bit. If we keep doing what we're doing, we should, instead of five years, we should have it paid off in four.
So we got four more years there.
Yeah, that, well, yeah, we paid one year, this current year, this year, and there'll be two more after this budget.
Two more years.
After this one.
All right, thank you.
So then under expenses, the three hundred and fifty thousand, that includes the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from region twelve and also the hundred thousand dollar contribution from the conservation board towards the trail paving. The other stuff is kind of routine stuff. The Swan Lake road maintenance, they're coming this spring to seal all the cracks in the road and we're gonna restripe it, the centerline stripe, and we have some signage we need to replace, too. Trail maintenance, that's just our general trail maintenance and our contribution to Sack County every year for trail pass sales, so we have to put some in there for that. The fifty thousand dollar Tigus land purchase, ten thousand of that obviously is from the Pheasants Forever contribution. Tax payments, and then equestrian trail improvements. We need to put some rock and stuff down in the campground and some stuff back there, gun range. That's just basically to buy new targets and then do dust control on the gravel road there.
Going back to the trail book, Jason, I'm not, you're letting a bid this week?
Next week, next Tuesday, yeah, that's all.
And then as far as the, the grant from Union Pacific, have you heard anything back on that?
I have not, and I sent an email to Chris again this morning if there's anybody, because I heard through the grapevine that the city of Carroll got some for the baseball stadium. I don't know, but I haven't heard thing, anything from them, good or bad, yet, so.
We don't know if that's good news or bad news, we just don't know. Did you know the private fundraising topped a hundred over the weekend?
Yes, yeah, so that's good news, since we were last in to see, we are up over a hundred thousand dollars now, so, pretty excited about that. And basically next, by next Tuesday, you know, once they figure out what the bottom dollar's gonna be on that project, then we'll know better, where we need to be, I guess, And I don't know when we fi, figure out on, with what the letting's gonna be or what the bid's gonna be. Do you want the fundraising group, that was their question, they want you to, want them to come back in once we know a final number and discuss things again, or?
I, I think that's what we agreed to, you know, if they don't feel it's necessary, I mean.
Well, no, they, they wanna, I mean, they wanna make sure, they don't wanna come in without being invited in.
Yeah, well, they're always invited, it's a public meeting, so, but, yeah, I think so.
As I said, Tuesday, we should know, you know, what the bids are, so.
Yeah.
That should give us a better idea and.
I think that was the point.
What time is it?
They thought usually by noon, they had.
Jason had reported that there were seven companies that took out plans, so we hope that there's seven bids, right?
Yeah, that, they were pretty sure that of the seven that took out plans, they, those seven would bid the project, so hopefully that's good news.
Early days, they're hoping for three, so it's nice to see that kind of activity.
Hopefully, there's a lot of competition out there and things come in favorable, let's keep your fingers crossed, I guess, but. Yeah, it's supposed to be next Tuesday, they thought by noon, early afternoon, they should have something out, so.
So right now for a trail, you got a hundred thousand in private?
Yes, just a shade over a hundred.
And then you got a grant of two fifty?
Two fifty.
And what else you got?
A hundred thousand dollars from the conservation board. Basically, if we use the numbers we kind of talked about last time, if the bids come in at five fifty, which we're hoping, plus there was that another fifty thousand in engineering costs for construction engineering, that puts the, the total project at around six hundred thousand, if you take out, well, the two fifty, the hundred and the private fundraising, we're still at about a hundred and forty-nine thousand, short. Whether we get anything from UP or not, I don't know, hopefully we hear something soon, either good or bad, so we know, but. But I'm hoping that's encouraging, that seven people are gonna bid on it, so, I mean, I hope they all do, we'll see, but they're all, according to JEO, they're all reputable companies that they've, they know and are almost positive are gonna bid the project, And then lastly, the REAP account, last couple of years, our, our REAP take have been, has been about around sixteen thousand, depending on where it's funded at. So I, I put fifteen thousand in for this year and, and we'll spend that out back to the Tigus purchase, be, to pay ahead on that a little bit, to get that, that bought down and get it paid off soon, sooner than anticipated, so. And one thing, Courtney, I don't know how that's, all those donations for the private of command, you know, through the foundation, the conservation foundation, will that need to write a check out from the foundation to the county then, or can we pay that out of the foundation, or how does that need to work?
When you say the foundation, you're not talking about your capital fund, you're talking about the, they would be a check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that need to come through capital?
Yes.
Did you get a check, talking about that fund base, did you get a check from that other outfit?
I have, yeah.
I thought they wanted to get that all lined up.
So I'll touch base on Tuesday when I hear back on the letting and maybe the following Monday or something, we can come in and chat about the numbers.
Sure.
If that works.
Okay. Anything else to do?
Thanks, Jason.
Have a good day to Jason.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go down next to Six Agam on the agenda, is the case management budget review, Jason or Justin?
Good morning, you two.
And we also have the mental health budget. And that would probably be, the mental health budget would probably be the easier one to go over first because there's really not a lot in there, you know, with the region that's taken over, so. As far as mental health goes, if we look at page three, that will have a county distribution to the region, that amount is seven hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So that's something that Dawn Mensor, the regional CEO, figured that out.
I think it's on page two, isn't it?
There we go.
Okay, yeah, I got it on page two, all right.
Oh, okay, my page, I guess my pages are marked differently, sorry. So that's, that's just the amount that Carroll County will pay the region, basically, for the region stuff. And then the other thing that will be in there is under department sixty-three, I guess, it'll probably be on page four for you, maybe?
Yep.
That's just Rosie's, half of Rosie's salary, FICA, Ibers and insurance. All that amount is reimbursed by the region, so that's not an expense for Carroll County, but it's just, works easier since she's already a county employee to pay her out that amount and then the region will reimburse that. And that's, that's all that's in the mental health budget.
And what percent of your salary is that, Rosie?
That, Rosie's salary is fifty percent, Rosie's not here today.
With some changes, of course, with not having anybody from the region come on a regular basis, is that an acronyms, should be more or less?
Well, I guess we'll probably find that more out in the coming months because that's just a recent change that's happened, so it's, it's gonna, that's gonna have to play out before we can really accurately determine what percentage that is.
Because of Louise Galbraith was coming in over on a regular basis, that's, that's gonna happen anymore, I would expect that would put a decreased burden on Rosie and if it's more than fifty percent of her time, I think the region should pay more than fifty percent.
Sure, it's, yeah, it's possible. Louise is still gonna be the contact person for, for Carroll County, so it depends on how much of that goes pack, past the contact person and it's more of than the, the field work that would have to be done is what Rosie would end up doing, more than likely, so that'll kind of, I mean, we don't know how this is all gonna work out yet with that. So that's, I mean, that's, that's just changed pretty much this, this year in January, so we're gonna have to kind of see how that goes from here.
Creates a little bit of a dilemma on the budgeting part because I don't wanna lock in a situation where, lock, lock in a loss basically when we're subsidizing the region and it's hard to prove that it's more than we haven't done it yet, so. I'd rather be a little higher than, lower than, than fifty percent, we'll have to take a guess.
And Ro, I mean, Rosie's still gonna have her general assistants that she's responsible for, so, I mean, you know, I know her, half her day she has been spending, I mean, in the past, been spending on that, so the percentages were just never changed. The fact, you know, she's never really done time study or anything, as far as I know, to determine if that still remains at, you know, fifty percent. Because when the region took over, she was the social worker and when the region took over, she became the regional social worker. So that was, that was all kind of bit of a change and at that time, all the percentages and everything were just stayed at fifty percent. So that would have been for the last.
We talked about this, do you think it'd be beneficial to do a time study to make sure that we're getting fair treatment here?
She might wanna do that, yeah, because I don't, I, if you asked her, I'm not sure if she could say how much, what percentage she was at.
I, I guess if we think it's going above fifty percent, we absolutely need to do something like that, so if we ask the region for more than fifty percent, we can absolutely quantitatively justify that.
Sure, right. And that would be something that now with Louise just not maintaining an office here anymore, we could be more accurate with that now and, and do that for the next couple of months or something, we can kind of see where that goes.
I'd be a paper of that myself.
Sure, okay.
It's kind of a hassle to do, like we've done before, they're, they're a hassle to do, but it'd probably be worth the time for this situation.
Yep, yep, I could talk to Rosie about that.
Doesn't allow you to multitask.
Yeah.
We've done one every day for the last six, seven months.
Yeah, that's what we have to do for case management, yeah, and it's, it's really difficult to, you know, with, with Rosie, hope, you know, she does that, I mean, she gets general assistance calls, she doesn't get too many social work calls, but the general assistance stuff comes through, or, yeah, it could be difficult, but no, we can, we can talk to her about that and, and have her maybe do that for a couple of months or something. So that's it for the mental health budget, any questions about anything else on that?
Pretty much all expense other than just Rosie's reimbursement, so.
Yeah, and then as far as the case management budget, before we talk about the, the salary changes and stuff, I just wanted to go over a little bit of the rest of it first. We projected the revenue at two hundred and ninety-five thousand, projected expenses are three hundred and twenty-three thousand, two ninety-two. There's a shortfall there because Medicaid will only pay us for a certain amount of our expenses, we're limited to all our direct expenses plus twenty-three percent indirect expenses based on our direct cost, so that, that comes, that'll come out to somewhere around a thirty thousand dollars there. Six lines increased in the budget for a total of sixteen hundred and thirty dollars, that was the fuel, electric, water, sewer, cleaning and the sanitation. And mostly that's gonna be increased because the region will no longer be maintaining an office and so those utilities will have to be split up among general assistance and then veterans affairs, so with less offices to distribute that, then our utilities are gonna go up, too. And then the motor vehicle line was increased due to some needed repairs on the Impala.
Justin?
Yes.
I realize they don't have an office in there, but if we're doing work for them in that office space, should some of that utility still be attributed to them or not?
Well, the, the way that we had broken things out, starting in July, was based on office space.
Okay.
So they won't have an office space there anymore for Louise to come to, so that would be something that we would have to work out with the region. I don't know, it's, at this point, it's hard to say how many calls or if anybody will come, you know, clients would come to visit with anybody in Carroll because that would still be a possibility, but we have our conference room, which is just kind of a, you know, people. come to use that even outside our agency if they need to do IQ testing or other things like that, so.
Okay, I'm just thinking if you're using the space for doing regional work, you're using utilities at the same time.
Right. And they, yeah, and they won't be, they won't be having that office anymore then. It won't, won't be used.
Go ahead, Justin.
Okay. And then as far as able to decrease four lines, the mileage was decreased because we have less clients outside of Carroll County, so we'll just have less gas and less mileage to have to spend on that. The telephone, training and office equipment lines were also decreased just to, historically they weren't as high as they had been, and so we decreased that and projected, it wasn't projected to meet what had been, had in the past. Any questions on that stuff so far?
You've got two cars?
Yep.
And the one you don't usually run on hot days and summer.
The white one, the Impala is, is the one that would have some repairs that would need to be done.
There's the air conditioning.
Yeah, the air conditioning is one thing, and then the last time it was in for an oil change, they said there were some other things that they found that they needed to write up an estimate for. And the thing about that is motor vehicle expenses are a direct cost on our cost report, so that's something that we can get reimbursed for.
And you have a need for two cars?
Huh?
You have a need for two vehicles?
Um, they're both used at times, Rosie also pays a share of some of that for her general assistance and social work stuff, so she pays a part of that too.
Okay.
So it's, it's, we kind of share that, the red car is just case management and the white car we share with Rosie.
Okay, go ahead.
As far as salaries, everybody got the two point five percent increase. Overall, the FICA and IPRs contributions were decreased by a total of two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. The overall salaries were decreased by twenty-three thousand, six seventy-nine, which, which is good when you look at the budget, as far as when we do our cost report in June, since the, the salaries decreased, that brings down our direct costs, which will mean we won't be able to get reimbursed as many of the indirect costs because of our salaries. And then the other main thing that I want to talk about is, for the last year, when the region took over, they had been reimbursing twenty-five percent of Jean Coates's salary. She had been part mental health before that, and then when the region started, she just maintained that level at twenty-five percent region and then seventy-five percent case management. It turns out that the region, really, everything was more based out of Storm Lake than Carroll and that percentage really hasn't held up, she really hasn't done much with the region at all, and she's been spending basically all her time on case management, and so we are asking that, that twenty-five percent be transferred over to case management to reflect the duties that she's actually doing right now. A year ago at this time, we had one more case manager and Dawn Mensah was also here as our CPC and then the case management supervisor and administrator. And so since that time, we've decreased our staff, we lost two case managers and added one, and then Dawn is no longer the case management administrator or supervisor, so Angela and I have picked up those duties as well. So Jean's really been busy with that, and then since Angela and I have taken over in July, we've really tried to involve her more in the whole case management process, as far as when we do a program evaluation to help be involved in that, involved with creating the newsletter twice a year, she helped us and created the brochures when we had to redo that this year, so she's really been busy that whole time. And then also, she's the one that, that covers the office when all of us are gone, so, you know, it would be difficult if, if the county decided not to transfer that twenty-five percent over, it would be difficult then to cover the office because she would be gone about nine and a half hours a week that would have to be covered by, by the case manager, so that's something that we're looking forward to change, which of course would affect the budget, budget because her salary would be an indirect expense that wouldn't be reimbursed by Medicaid.
Any part of that that could be considered direct expense?
No, in order to be a direct expense, she would have to be working directly for...
She'd have to carry the case load.
Yeah, she'd have to be working for the clients.
So, like doing a newsletter, I think that's still administrative, even though the newsletter goes to the clients.
Right.
And the newsletter was something that I was doing and I gave that to her.
Yeah, it would be, it would be very, very...
I know we talked about it and no ideas of time, I'm wondering if you...
We, we talked afterwards and realistically, a lot of what I do with the quality assurance piece, is not something that I would be able to, to give to her. That's, that's a big portion time-wise of what my, the big component of what I do. So there's really nothing there that could potentially be given to her. And Justin looked at his job as far as the administrative duties that he does.
And those things come in big chunks, like doing the budget, doing the cost reports, things like that, none of it's gonna make a, a large impact on, on helping us with those things to take them away to affect the direct costs.
All right, well, I appreciate you looking into it, to find a way, it would be beneficial to our cost.
Now, we'll continue as things come up, look at, try to streamline what we do.
This is part of that validation that I shared with you, you know, and not so much removing work from others because those people are still being paid at a hundred percent too, so.
Right.
Just part of the validation.
And that, that's pretty much it for the case management budget.
Any persons who have any questions? Do you get any more?
No. No, I did the pre-budget, so it's hard to my question.
Most of my questions are questions we asked the pre-budget, just to see if he'd come up, any bigger, better ideas.
Right, yeah, and the, the thing we were trying to come up with is if there was anything Jean could do to take some of our administrative time away and there wasn't anything that we could look at that was gonna make any large, you know, just a large impact, it would be, you know, some small things here or there that in the great scheme of things isn't gonna take much time away.
Have you had any dialogue with Eileen by any chance? I mean, that'd be a perfect fit, you know, for what she does for Louie, I don't know, or does she have long-term plans to remain in her position at all?
I don't know.
Eileen Paulson, VA.
That may be a question for Louie.
Is that, if something like that, it'd be a perfect fit.
Location-wise, it's a good spot.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
He's outside here somewhere.
I did. Girl's getting dry.
Good morning.
Hi, Pat.
What are you guys doing today?
Good.
Okay, we got the seventh item is the annual budget.
Did everybody get a chance to read the little, I gotta send out, look over it. That pretty much explains it, I hope. I have a couple of things I just want to add. Back in nineteen ninety-four, the overall ambulance budget was four hundred thousand with a tax asking of about two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Last year, the budget was over a million dollars with a tax asking of a hundred and thirty-eight, so we're getting more efficiently, running more efficient as we go. Been budgeting thirty-five thousand for an ambulance every year since about nineteen ninety-eight, when an ambulance cost seventy-nine thousand dollars, including a cot. Now, the last one we bought was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand with another twenty thousand dollars for a cot. As, after I sent this out, I did some more checking today, as of last Friday, our revenue increased another forty-two thousand dollars. Right at this time, as of last Friday, we're at fifty-eight percent of the budget year the way, as I figure. Our expenses are at fifty-six percent, our revenue's at sixty-seven percent. Our overall revenue is actually thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars above our expenses, and that hasn't happened in a lot of years. So we're running much more efficiently than we have in the last several years that I have record of. What I'm asking in the budget is a two-year rotation on the ambulances. The difference between a two-year and a three-year, basically what amounts to is when we get done with them, and a two-year rotation will be fourteen years old and a three-year rotation will be twenty-one years old. And that's the problem running until now, we've got some that are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years old and they're, they're borderline roadworthy. You know, take a lot of, still take a few years to get those rotated out, but if we can get the new ones in with the new equipment and get them on a rotation system, then we're not playing catch-up because as you read in here, a lot of the, the cots were all bought in a relatively short amount of time, the heart monitors were all bought a relatively short amount of time, which means they're all gonna run out of the maintenance agreements and they're not gonna be able to be repaired all in the same short amount of time. I'm looking at a ten-year plan where you can stretch this out and every year you have, you know, instead of having one year where you gotta buy all-new cots and all-new heart monitors, you buy them every two years or so and, and spread it out and make it a little more even and easy to budget and get the rotations where, you know, they get out into the county before they actually run out of their, their maintenance agreements or usabilitys.
How does the mileage look on according to Dawn but reading, are you making more miles per day and faster, less or...
We're, we're doing more, we're doing more calls. The last two years, we've been running right around seventeen hundred calls versus fourteen to fifteen hundred. The three rigs, excuse me, in our garage, we ran eighty-five thousand miles on last year, so...
How many miles, all three?
Eighty-five thousand. So when we're shipping them out of ours, they're running right around two hundred thousand right now, between a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand. And the two-year rotation would drop that down a little bit to probably, I would, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand probably.
Currently, right now, you in Carroll, you got a one with fifty thousand, one with fifty-six, one with a hundred and fifty-eight?
The two thousand and nine, that's the one we brought up from Coon Rapids, that's a remount that they got for them and it only had probably twelve thousand miles on it, so we brought it up here to put some mileage on it and we're gonna send it back down there with our next new one. And I did get a bid for a remount in there too, if you see, saw that. The projected revenue on the budget I turned in is a five-year average, looking at what our revenue is this year, I'm guessing that projected income's gonna be a whole lot higher than what that is. Our, with the full-time bookkeeper, our revenue has increased dramatically. On, we set up monthly payments on some people that were having trouble paying everything and off of that, since August, we've collected eighteen thousand dollars on that alone and signing more people up pretty much every day, every week, which is keeping a lot of mileage fractions.
What are we doing different on overtime and holiday pay? Is that just a different...
Well, for whatever reason, when we transferred the data in, there wasn't an overtime line. It was pulling everything from the salaries line, so I just, I created an overtime line and broke that apart.
So, the history on line one wouldn't include overtime? We just don't have any history on the overtime?
I can get history from the old system, but I don't have any in the new system.
So, would the expense totals include overtime then?
That three twenty-nine, two seventy-four, eighty-six from this fiscal year has got overtime in it.
Only from this fiscal year?
Yeah. And I can get, I can get the overtime from prior years.
And I'm sorry, were you pulling the three twenty-nine?
Uh, page one, the first expense line item in year-to-date activity.
Includes overtime for the year?
Yes.
But, but once again, my question would be on prior years, like the thirteen budget, the fourteen budget?
No, those are just gonna be salaries.
So those are understated by expenses then, by the amount of overtime then, correct?
Yeah, I would need to run a report from the old software to show you what overtime was in those years.
Okay, so...
And I can do that.
So if we're looking at an expense history, we'd have to add the overtime to that for an accurate illustration as far as what expenses have been done, okay?
So these expenses don't have overtime in them?
Only this one. Because in those years, they had an overtime line and for whatever reason, when we rolled that over, we didn't have overtime line. And I'll, I'll run a report that shows, you can see the history on that.
Now you got me confused. So, the overtime, let us say in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, the, the total was five hundred and forty-three thousand for salaries, the overtime is included in there or is it somewhere else? And where is it?
It's my understanding it's not included in that number.
Then where is it at?
It's in the overtime line in the old software. It did not, that, that line item did not come through.
Okay, so it's just not printing out here at all?
No, so what I need...
So it's not in, it's not like I can pick it up in another line here?
No.
So the total is wrong too then, for each of those years?
Yeah, because there's no overtime in it. Yeah.
Okay, now I got it. Just a software change screw.
Well, yeah, and you catch it when you're doing this kind of stuff, so.
Sure.
I'll run that overtime report, so you guys can see what that number was.
Thank you.
Well, one thing with the overtime, we had three people off with extended sick leave this year and we stayed below budget with that. We found a part-time paramedic that was able to cover a lot of hours instead of having a full-time paramedics cover, which saved a tremendous amount of money. So we're staying below budget on that even with the excess amount of time off.
Yes, part-time employees typically break that. So, one of the major changes here is your request to go from three to two-year cycle of rotation of vehicles.
Yes, and then budgeting it accordingly, because we've been budgeting $35,000 a year for an ambulance. And that would take five years to budget enough for an ambulance at 150-plus. So, I'm wanting to bump that up to basically 80,000.
Part of my concern is, this year, you showed us a nice increase in revenue, which is great. I can't guarantee that in future.
No. Yeah, although a big part of why there's a big revenue increase is we're, because we're running more efficiently. We're doing, with Linda being full-time, we're getting a lot more insurance stuff done in a timely manner. We're catching a lot of the ones that the insurance companies are sending back to nine. We're getting those refiled and getting the money for them. We're getting people set up on payment plans. It's just really much more efficient the way we're doing it than what it was being done. Can I guarantee how much we're going to bring in? No, but I think it's going to be consistently better than what it has been the last several years. Our, our call volume's increasing, which is part of it. And as I've said before, with the baby boomers, which includes everybody at this table except for Courtney, we're aging, they're causing more strain on the medical system. They're going to cause, you know, create more call volume for us as well. Which is again, to put more miles on the vehicles and wear them out faster, so it's kind of a cycle.
I guess my main concern is, what if we do have shortfall? We can't pull 80,000, we're going to do that?
Well, one thing...
Can't punt at the taxpayers as fast.
I know.
Not when they're paying about...
You guys had mentioned a, a remount. I think you brought it up last time, and I had some concerns about the remount. I invited the guy down from Arrow, who we bought him from in the past, and explained my concerns to him. And over the past, they, they did some management changing up there, and they've been listening to the people that they sell to about their concerns. The things that I was concerned about, you know, the AC units, the electrical systems, the hardware, they have replaced their, and their new ones, they're replacing all that automatically now because they've had complaints about it. I mentioned the heavy-duty suspension and the trouble we had with the last one we bought from them, just eating brakes and tires and, and all that. And they, on the new specs that they show here, they've upgraded the suspension to the heavier-duty ones. Another thought that I had thought on this, because I know this is asking a lot for a big increase, if you take, and, and talking to the gentleman that sells the remounts, that's all he sells is remounts. And he, he said that you don't want to run a whole fleet of remounts, you need new ones in there every once in a while. So, another thought I had was if we buy every other one a remount, saving, I think it's almost $40,000 cheaper. Yeah, and it's, it's a 2011. No, that one should be the new one. That shouldn't be corrected. I picked up the wrong one last time. The one that I sent you last should be corrected.
The Arrow is new, but the...
They should all be Chevy chassis. For the Clucky, I picked up the wrong one last time. I picked up a Type 1, this is a Type 3.
The Clucky is still an F series.
Velves are Chevy.
Yeah, it's a Super, Super B, Super...
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
...Type 3. I believe that is a Ford, and I believe that's a F series chassis.
Well, they're faulty. He told me it was Chevy.
It's not what it says. Well, we're not going to approve any, I mean, I mean, this is secondary to this, but when we get to that, we're going to need to have, you know, line-by-line specs comparing A, B, C, and D.
And what I, what I did with this remount that I spec'd was I brought him down, he brought one down and showed us, and then I showed him our last new one that we bought, which is a Wheel Coach. He went back, and he has a 2011 Wheel Coach that he can turn into basically an identical twin to the one that we have. And it ends up being 40, $35,000 cheaper. And, you know, if we could take every other one as a new one, every other one as a remount, the years we buy the remounts, we could buy the, the cots and heart monitors and get them, it'd be a slower rotation, but we'd get them out into the county. And it would, you know, it would cut back on the cost, but you'd still have some kind of rotation system set up where you'd get newer equipment out in the county a little bit quicker.
Okay, now, I hear you've got inner information about that they, the remounts are not designed to last that long and be doing what they're doing. Did he, since you had him come down, does he change his...
He says that 10 to, 10 to 14 years would be, 14 years would be the high side, but he says it shouldn't be a problem. And it's something else that I was, I'm, he's, when you buy a new one every other year, and you, if you do the two-year rotation, you end up with a 14-years-old. And here's where we really save some money in the future. You buy one new, 14 years down the road, when it's time to be done with that one, we know that box. We bought that box new, we can remount that box. We just take it up, and they go through it, put all new stuff in it, and you're using your same box. So, you're saving the money that you would have to normally buy a box to remount. So, you're going to save some money there. You know, because you, and then when the, the remounts we buy, when we get done with them in 14 years, we just trade them in.
I mean, I don't think we ever bought a box to remount. We always just took one up and sold it and traded it.
But we don't have any that are worthy of that now.
Well, his bid shows that, though, Pat.
No, his bid is one that he has.
Oh, it, it just says, okay, it just said, yeah, and I think that's what we've done.
Yeah, we've bought boxes from them.
Yeah. And it's, you know, again, it just kind of flies in the face to what, you know, the Wheel Coach, the last Wheel Coach that we bought. Because, I mean, I stood right there, and the salesperson said, "This would be the last box you ever had to buy." I mean, it's just, depends on salesmanship, the way I see it, I mean...
And that'd be the first one that we remounted. As it got out there, we remounted that, and you'd end up getting 28 years out of that box. But I, I wouldn't...
And that was the one we were replacing, you know, so... And this one says, "Remounted and completely reconditioned with all applicable warranties." My understanding is, it's just this, the box, I mean, everything that goes inside of it.
Everything but the cabinetry comes out. And they're, and he invited me up to see the process. I mean, they, and this is something they've just done recently, is change where they put all-new wiring in, all-new AC and heating in, everything. Even the latches, I was talking about latches, they replaced all the latches and hinges. Yeah, they didn't used to do that, but now they are. And he also had an idea when, the one that we're going to send out to the county this time is the 2009, so it's in good shape, it's got 50,000 miles, that's, we won't have to do this. Next one will be a 2010, will have 200,000 miles on it. He says we can send that up to them, spend $2,000, $3,000 bringing it all up into shape before it goes out into the county, and should have a lot less trouble with it once it gets in the county. Do a little preventive maintenance before we send it out. You know, make sure everything's up to snuff the way it should be. I'm trying to look for, add a long-term way to, to save money and still do the best we can for the county and get the, the equipment we need, where we need it, and when we need it.
I would agree that we've been budgeting $35,000 a bit too long. You know, I, I don't think you'll get much argument out of me on that one. But we've gone from a four-year rotation to a three-year rotation, and I'm just failing to see the need for a two-year rotation. It's probably just me, it's, but it, that's...
You're asking 21 years of an emergency vehicle, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, but those, those 16th through 21st years, they're not frontline vehicles at all. They're not putting on the 80, they're not part of that 85,000-mile rotation.
No, but the sitting is probably harder on them. The sitting not running is probably harder on them than the 80,000 miles we put on them.
Yeah, a lot of that's going to depend upon who you got there, making sure to get started and run.
And regardless of what he said about that, you know, the, the heavy-duty frame and things like that, you know, brakes and things like that aren't a condition necessarily of, you know, the amount of load or frame or lack of frame you're putting on them, it's, it's use.
The...
You put brakes on it because they get used, you know, not because of what they...
The ones we have in the county, I just had a complaint from Coon Rapids about the one they have down there that it's hard to keep it on the road because it's, and the one from Bree that go down gravel road, and the dust comes in the back of it because all the gaskets and seals are shot. You know, it's got an air ride suspension on it that's shot, and they, they just wear out.
Yeah. We've been traveling gravel roads since ambulance service began. Let me ask you a couple other expenditures, we'll get off that center. When you did your pre-budget, you bumped up your building a little bit, too. And I, I know why we spent so much money this year on it, but what are you expecting this year?
Well, even with the, if we do an amendment and put that money that we use for the flood back in, we're still running behind. It's just general maintenance. You know, it's an old building, and like the, we've, the garage floor needs redone, which, you know, I've been doing myself a little bit at a time.
Garage floor needs redone?
As far as the paint's all peeled off of it and everything. So, you know, that, a paint for that's like almost 200 bucks a gallon to do that. We had to put new runners on all the steps going upstairs this year because they were all peeling and, and, you know, a trip hazard. Some of the carpets, getting to the point it needs replaced, just general maintenance.
Okay, but you're not planning any real capital expenditures in terms of roof? We talked about that apron, we've talked about...
In my long-term projection, it had that for the next year, because, you know, I threw that in because they were talking about 2017, they're talking about putting an approach in.
Right.
And the last guy that was on the roof said, "In the next five years, it's going to need replaced."
I'm just wondering if we could, you know, because if you, if you look at your history, it's 4,700. You know, last year was certainly high, but I don't know.
That, that paint on that floor, wasn't that supposed to be warranted for some years? I know Bill was having some issues with it.
Yeah, and they came back and fixed it once or twice, and it's...
It's still on?
No. The guy at Sherwin-Williams says it's just the fact that there was so much oil on it, you're never going to get paint to stick to it. Our theory was get it all done, and then every year, just touch up the spots that are bad and keep it going that way. Because the paint they have, it's, it's all pre-mixed and everything, so it'll always be the same color, it'll always match. So, what we did, we took a sander, we did a test spot on the center, took a sander, sanded it all down, then we took a scrubber and scrubbed all the dirt off of it and painted it, and it's held up really well.
Well, for $200 a gallon, they should paint it four years.
No kidding. It, the paint really goes a long ways.
Is this epoxy paint?
It's epoxy, and then it's got something else in it that's supposed to make it adhere really well.
Well, isn't that kind of the reason you put that on there, so when you clean up, be able to kind of deal with blood so it doesn't stick in the pores? That's what I thought. I know, but I think he had somebody to put that on it originally.
It, the, from what I hear, they came in and soda blasted the whole thing and everything in it. It's just a mess right now.
Line item on page two, your radios, looks like we haven't been spending our budget there.
Well, I just, we're going to be updating, if we get this new rig, we're going to put a new radio in it because the next one we have is close to 25 years old. So, with getting new rigs, I would put a new radio in them instead of taking the oldest one in the county and putting it in the newest rig that we have, our handhelds and walkies.
But you, you actually upped that line item by $1,000 in prior years. We've, prior years, we've spent $736, $70 in 109.
Haven't spent $1,000 in the last three years.
And, and remember, you know, we get 50% reimbursement from 911.
That's on everything?
Um, pagers, batteries, I better relook at radios, but... Yeah, it's just, it looks like that could be revisited. Anybody else catch that, catch that?
Where's it? Well, I thought it looked like it, but I lost my head.
Line, it's the first line on page two.
Okay. That, yeah, that might be a typo, I don't remember raising it.
My typo, not yours.
Well, yeah, it was on your pre-budget, too.
Was it?
Moving on down to refunds, it looks like, hopefully, we're getting a handle on those now that we have full-time clerk down there. Should that be as high as that?
That could probably be back, back down, because as you see, we've only had one, and we're not having the issue where they're getting billed twice because Linda's there, keeping on top of it. So, that one probably could be back down to what we had before at 3,000, just to have it, you know, there just in case.
And then you've got your motor vehicle, that's, you know, what we were discussing just a moment ago. The other equipment, is that cots?
No, well...
How, how's that go from 8,000 budgeted to 33,000?
Yeah, that's one with the cots and the monitors figuring every two years. But if we did the, if we do the remounts every other year, it'd be every four years instead of every two years. So, that could be back down basically to half of, that's what we did. Because the cots are, right now, I, they got one, I think it's a last-year model that they're holding on to, they've got $16,000, but normally, they're, they run right at 20.
Okay. And finally, the one right below that, Pat, what's the difference again? I know I've probably asked that a thousand times, but I apologize.
On which one?
Why, you got 33,000 to do the cots and monitors, and then budgeted $10,000 for ambulance medical equipment.
That one...
And why would that be such a significant increase? And again, just looking at history.
We need to change that, the name of that one, actually. That is for maintenance agreements on the heart monitor. That's, oh, I forget how much that was. And then miscellaneous equipment that we repair and replace through the course of the year this year. And we had to buy some suction equipment, and we had to buy some pulse oximeters. But the majority of, I think like 7,500 of it is maintenance agreement on the heart monitors.
Yeah, I would just assume that we have equipment and then support completely separated, so we get a better idea.
Yeah, I was, I was just going by what they had in there before. I hadn't changed it, but I can, we can do that.
Otherwise, it, you know, it looks like once one's used up, we just start using the other one.
Right.
Well, you guys have all heard how I feel about the replacement. I don't know if you've got to have to make the decision today on it or not. Start plugging things in sooner than later, you know?
Yeah. I, I really think that two-year rotation is a, a must. It's, you know, you look at, when you send these guys out in these vehicles that are that old, it's two people that are working and a person that's in the back taking, that's being taken care of. And I know it, this, I don't know if this is a fair comparison, but you wouldn't expect a deputy to drive a car 21-years-old responding to emergencies.
I think they replace theirs way too often, too. At least I would be surprised.
But you, you said you would be, you would lean to going two years, one new one, and the next two years, a remount?
Yes, yes. And then with, when you buy the remounts, buy the, the heart monitor and the cot, which is going to be probably close to 40,000 to 45,000 dollars.
So, so we'd wind up with a blend of the vehicles?
Yes. And then on the, on the far end of it, the ones that we've bought... Yes. And then on the, on the far end of it, the ones that we buy new, we're going to remount those. And that's, you know, that's where you're going to start saving the big money when you start having your own box to remount. But that's going to take six, eight years to get there. But if you figure, you know, if you're looking long-term, which I'm trying to do, I think that's a good, like, as you put it, a good blend to have and a good way to get stuff rotated out there.
Pat, I'll give you a little credit. When Marty and I first met with you that one day, I don't know if there's just been, I, I, maybe there was something overestimated in that first estimate, but your current estimate as of this budget is one point two. And when Marty and I met with you, it was one point three. But I don't see any line items that have changed.
Unless that's the overtime that's not in there.
Well, you got sixty thousand budgeted for overtime here, included in the one point two.
I've been working on this way before I even talked to you guys, trying to make it as efficient, but still make it the best service that we possibly can for the money.
This is indirect with budget, but like here, I know we have had in the past an issue with reconciling with the treasurer's office, the receipts and everything. And how is the progress on that? Have we reconciled yet?
I worked with the state auditor and she ran through everything and she says it's a whole lot better than it was last year. I'm still working with the treasurer on getting, trying to figure out the right numbers that the state wants putting in those areas, get that done. I gotta get ahold of the state auditor again and, and find out for sure where those numbers are coming from. Because the way they got it set up, it's more like if we'd handle all the money, but most of the money goes to the treasurer and they handle it. So it makes it a little harder to get the numbers that they want plugged in there.
Yeah, that's where the problem's been, is the reconciliation between the two of you. We're hoping to get that fixed up for, so it's not on our next audit, so.
Okay. I'm working on that.
And, and I'll just mention this, I know we've, we had a lot of discussion last couple meetings on mileage and using personal vehicles versus county vehicles. And I don't know how you're doing this, but in an ambulance department, I just visualize there's an opportunity if you'd have some employees who have training or something to do out of town, say in Des Moines or something, that they would use that car there as opposed to their personal cars as quick as possible.
They have them.
They have them? That's something we would, we appreciate and encourage because it's much better than tax fare.
Yeah, we, there've been six of them do forty-eight hour refreshers, which are basically five trips either Des Moines or Sussie and they took a car all those.
Very good.
And they drove back and forth instead of staying there, so.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, they're, they're helping keep things as down as far as we can to, as far as expenses.
Making difference. Thank you.
Yes, it does.
So, so far, this, my next question is thirty-five thousand we've been putting here. How much of that do we have built up in that capital fund right now?
One-twenty-six, I think. I don't think that's...
That's more than what I thought. And then we have another thirty-five budgeted.
Yeah, one, one-eleven.
That's what I was thinking, one-eleven. And then we have thirty-five budgeted to go in first of...
Is that January? It's December. It's December.
Oh, it was in that part track.
Then there's, to what I understand, it's thirty-five will go in July one.
That's what's in the budget, yeah.
Yeah. So, and we talked about if we bought a new one this year, we'd have to amend the budget because it wouldn't be enough. If we went with the remount, there'd actually be some extra, which we could use for the COTS, the monitor.
I can mail it to you, to you, to this app.
I got it.
I'll use it a lot. I think I got that.
Make sure you put it out posting.
That file's a little...
Well, that's what I was going to say.
More damn budget paper.
And if you guys have any questions or anything, my cell phone number's on the packet I gave you. More than happy to answer any questions I can.
For some reason, I didn't get this.
I laid everyone's in here.
I have another one down at the office I could give you. This one's got all kinds of chicken scratch.
I don't know why I didn't get it. I guess it could be at home, too. Shuffled it somewhere.
Well, there ain't, there's no paperwork.
No, there's not enough paperwork.
Okay.
Thanks, Pat.
See you tomorrow night. Yes.
Morning, Marilyn.
Morning, Marilyn.
We need Pat back?
Just right over here.
We need Pat back in here for you?
A little water. Well, I'm not sure where you want to start. Well, I guess we'll start at right the top. If you look at revenues, I dropped them, seven thousand. And the reason I did that is last year I thought we were going to be coming in a little better than what we were, but we're not. We're still going to be at the same, probably the same type of revenues when it comes to the recording. Everything else is pretty well staying the same, but we've probably just refinanced everybody in Carroll County, so there's just, everybody's done. They've got the lowest interest rates they're going to get, so. The main thing right now is the sales that we're still doing and things like, I mean, we're doing the recording of mortgages and things, but prior to that, if you look at the other years where they had the eighty-eight thousand in two thousand twelve and thirteen, that's probably where we hit the most of the releases and things of that nature, the refine, when the interest rates really started dropping and everybody started refinancing. So that's, you know, just to be realistic. I'd love to see it better, but that's nothing I can change. So, but the basic of it was revenues are probably still looking the same as far as everything else. Do you have any questions on revenues?
I don't.
Okay. Expenditures, the only thing changing is salaries, otherwise my, as far as the office expenses and things like that, I've not changed anything there at all. They're all the same. And same thing, yeah, none of those, I didn't change any, like supplies and postage and things of that nature, I didn't change any of it. The, the increase in, with the Island Records, with the maintenance fees, it's probably gone up three percent. But I've not changed any of my expenditures to figure, you know. Think I'll be able to absorb that, three percent of that cost, what I have. And they're trying to do something a little different. And if that works between what Island Records is trying to do and what we're doing here, that increase, I should be able to absorb.
On the general office supplies, I've seen in the past we've budgeted fifty-four hundred and we spent thirty-seven, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three and we only thousand. It just looks a little high.
It all depends sometimes what, what my paper costs are and what my, things of that nature. Don't, they all, they fluctuate depending on when I buy different things. I don't change that because I've gone on the other line items, gone over. So, but the bottom line has not gone over and gone under. So instead of changing and going in, that's where I've not... That's where the three percent, I would, instead of increasing the three percent, like say, when we increase in maintenance fees, any of the maintenance fees, that's why I've not increased any of those maintenance fees this year.
So combined with reduced revenue and then adding employees' group health in there, a couple little odds and ends, that's what increases the tax asking by that much, correct?
And this year I have three on single policy. Which compared to two thousand twelve is still less when I had two than when I had two employees.
Uh, for the insurance?
Yes.
Still going with that full-timer, the full-time addition?
Part-time.
Or, are you, is she part-time?
She's, she's over twenty-one now. She's three days and four days.
Okay, that's what's confusing me because I was going to ask...
Because she does not have the, she can, she has insurance, but she does...
She has enough hours to get the insurance, but she's still considered part-time, so we're going to leave the line part-time.
Yeah. Because it all depends on what week, if we're at, if I'm at meetings or when Kathy, if there's some issues with health issues or with vacation, then we adjust the, the days. But when one of us cannot be there alone, so we have to adjust it the day, week before. She may be three weeks, three days and the following, just because of the... So we, it's flexible with that three and four.
It makes for expensive insurance.
Right.
Very expensive insurance when you have a barely full-time employee.
She's there three days and four days.
Yeah, yeah, it's extra expensive insurance.
But I don't have any of my staff on any family plans. My staff are all on single family policies.
She's only, she'd be only eligible for a single.
That's right.
The other, you, you both would be eligible for...
Yeah, but we're not.
Yeah, right. And, and sticking with that raise we talked about?
Mm-hmm.
That was the only thing that I had an issue with.
Well, and the four thousand, if you look at the budget sheet on just on the, this is on the record management, I just, I dropped that, usually if I put in there forty-five hundred, it seems we're still down, we're still going to be down about five hundred documents unless spring changes and...
That was on budget, too?
Yeah, so that's the only thing. And also that's where I'm taking out any books or anything of that nature, which I have to, I have more books and things to be scanned and fixed. And we're indexing and I'm going to have more scanning and I want to get the indexes, which are, have never been scanned. And there's about, there's quite a few books, if I can figure out how to get that all done and get it into our system, that's going to be done this year. Because then that is something that, there's no backup again. So that's where the money comes for that. And anything else that has to deal with any Land Records books or any of that nature.
That was the only other issue, yes?
Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Jean.
Almost afternoon. Is it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good afternoon. Well, you tell me where you want me to start. Start at the top. Auto registration fees increase, we're expecting to increase that by two thousand. Auto use tax fees will remain the same, about the same amount of cars being sold. And we keep just a dollar on each of those. Motor vehicle mailing fees, projecting that will stay about the same. Passport fees will be increasing, we're hoping, we're projecting that those will increase. Tax sale fees about the same, the tax sale deed fees, zero. Another treasurer's fees, we're projecting a hundred dollars. The revenue will, will stay pretty close to where it was last year, we're, we're hoping. Expenses. Our salaries out of eighty-one hundred will actually be three thousand dollars less than last year. Then, of course, FICA will be less, IFRS will be down. Group insurance, that is down. It's a ten percent increase insurance and insurance rates, I think, this year. That's going to be down. General office supplies, there's never any general office supplies taken out of eighty-one hundred, so I'm not sure why that's there. There hasn't been, I guess, for the last couple of years. Employee mileage and subsistence, I'd like to increase that by two hundred dollars. Part of the reason for that is the new employees. I'm looking to hopefully increase their training with half our staff being new. I'd like to send them, send them to some training sessions and so I'm asking for an increase there. On the ninety-twenty line, the salaries for regular employees, that's down by three thousand from last year. So my salaries there are also down. Part-time salaries stay the same at a hundred dollars and we've not used that. FICA is down. IFRS is down. The group insurance will be up. And I think, of course, that has to do with the insurance costs plus one of our retirees who we were paying their insurance for a year. General office supplies remain the same. Publication and notices, I'm asking for a hundred dollars more simply because I've been notified by a couple of the newspapers that advertising, well, one newspaper in particular, that my advertising costs are going to go up. Postage remain the same. Employee, employee mileage and subsistence, again, I'm asking for an increase there, again, for training purposes for our new employees also and for the, also for the software that we have, the version ten software. Telephone and telegraph, I'm going to cut that by five hundred dollars there. I can better use that under my educational and training line and my office data and processing line, so that's where I'd like, I'd like to increase those two, but I am decreasing the telephone and telegraph. And then dues and membership, about a hundred dollars, just to project possible increase there, increasing that by fifty dollars. So bottom line is my expenses that I'm at, my expenses for this next year will be two thousand dollars less than last year's budget. And my revenue will remain real close, maybe just, I think it was just a little over. Four thousand, okay.
We're all getting used to this new software. Once again, why are they just broken down between the top three girls and the bottom three girls?
No, it has to do with motor vehicle and administrative.
The administrative.
So the top three would be administrative?
No. No, one of, one of them, one of our top three is in motor vehicle.
Oh, Barb.
Barb.
Right.
She's in motor vehicle also, yeah. She's still the auto deputy. And then myself and the next two are... And then myself and the next two are in the 90-20.
So you'd have Barb and the front two girls on this top line?
Front three girls.
Sorry?
Yes, you're right.
So Barb and, Barb and three?
Barb and three on the top, out of the 8,100, and then Lisa, Jessie, and myself, out of the 90-20.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so that goes all the way through with all the FICA and IFRS and insurance?
Correct.
Okay. I'll ask you that again next year.
That's fine. That's an answer I can, a question I can answer.
We're still leaving the salaries the same. The salaries that you had planned first of January are going through-
I did adjust those from the first time.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that was the only thing that I took issue with, with her budget, so.
Yes, I did, I did make an adjustment after the first, you know, my first request term. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, the good news is it brings in your total less than what it was last year, but it's just not quite the savings that I was looking for, Jean, is all, so I guess I'm not gonna beat a dead horse anymore.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is veterans fairer budget. Louis?
Hi, Louis.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Ann Lander.
Hi, Ann.
Hi.
She's gonna help out here. In the past, I guess I've always admitted the budget, Chapter 35, it has always been the commission's job to annually meet, estimate the budget, and have that certified with the board supervisors. So hence, with Ann on board, we was able to achieve that this year.
So we're trying to do it how we're supposed to do it now.
I guess for Ann's sake, should we just go around through? Good idea.
Thank you.
Jean Miners?
Jean.
Neil Bach.
Neil.
Marty Danzer.
Marty.
Mark Bairdmore.
Mark.
Dean Scheller.
Dean.
Courtney Erback.
Courtney. Nice to meet all of you. Ann Lander, veteran also, you already know that.
So do you want me to give you the numbers or have her run through them? I guess we work together on this, I can-
Either way, whatever works for you.
All right, well, the very, the very, if you have questions, you can address us both or either one. The top of the, is the $10,000 allocation that comes to the county every year with the meeting of requirements, my office, mandatory training, reporting of the allocation expenses. As we go down here into salaries part time, I'm sure you're gonna have more questions. Let's, let's skip the salaries and the insurance and that, and let's go down to the other lines that have changed here. If you go down to the telephone and telegraph line, we did take over, almost $500, and that $300 is a low ball number, we did increase that number to $750. All the lines you'll find below that were kept the same, the same from the previous year. Grave markers, I did not go up on, it looked like we just underspent that a little bit. Grave markers is what we put out the cemetery for each World War veteran that dies. Second page, you're gonna see that we raised the agriculture and horticulture line from $3,500 to $3,600. That is the amount we pay grave maintenance to the cemeteries in the county at $4 a cemetery. So as-
$4 a plot.
$4 a plot in each cemetery, yeah, so that, we increased that line by a hundred dollars, so you have about 25 additional veterans. We did come just slightly underneath that the year before.
And you said that has to be with what you call non-perpetual?
Non-perpetual care cemeteries. Now, for example, Glidden is a perpetual care now, but they have a portion of their cemetery is non-perpetual care. The amount that Glidden charges every year never increases because all the new veterans are going to the perpetual care side now, so we only pay for the existing graves in the non-perpetual care side of the cemetery. So that's why our amount that we get yearly from Glidden never, or we pay them, never changes, but-
And actually, I had, I had a surprise, I had a conversation this weekend, I thought that you said, that's why I said it, and I wanted to make sure I had it right. So if you have a, let's, let's just pick on one, let's say Willie, they got a cemetery there, and they don't have a non-perpetual care in it, so you pay $4 for each one of those graves, and they have an acre on, and they new vets that go in there, they start charging for special care, then you don't pay that $4, right?
It says that we can come to an agreement with perpetual one-time payment to that cemetery.
Oh, one time?
One time, you can come into an agreement with that cemetery, but from what research I did last year, I think all cemeteries, and I want to say 1995 forward, are required by state law to be perpetual care. You don't have that choice anymore when you establish new cemetery. So this goes back to the older cemeteries, I know we're paying for two endetum, we're paying for two cemeteries in Arcadia, and I think everyone else basically has one, we pay no perpetual, or we pay no grave maintenance in Carroll City Cemetery, so.
And why is that?
Because it's a perpetual care cemetery.
It's probably perpetual care, and maybe there was an agreement made years ago, they have never approached us with a maintenance bill. So that's where we're at with them. So, so you know, we get, we're gonna go back up here to the salaries part time. That, that amount, you go ahead and pick it, Ann.
So our justification for asking for an increase in Louis' salary, most of the, is, has to do with bringing his position up to where it needs to be in relation to other veteran service officer positions statewide. His position previously, in the past, was, was, had, had less to do with, how to say, current, his job description has, has multiple facets in terms of levels of, levels of activities that he has to do, and so his job description is complex, which to me warrants a higher grade of pay. And if you look at the range of pay that other people in his position receives, gets a wide range of pay, from the lowest I could find was probably $12 and some cents, all the way up to $39. So, and of course, that was the highest, 39 is the highest, which is in Polk County, which has 28,000 veterans, which isn't us, okay? We're, we're in the top third of the state, and Louis is making about $14 and 70 cents an hour, and 90 cents an hour, and he's at, and our veteran population is about 1,500, and our general population, which you already know, is about 20,000. But compared to other counties in our same population base, he's making quite a bit less. Buena Vista is like $18.20 an hour, Henry is $16, SAC is $18.18 an hour. So to bring him up to that level is, it's about a 25% increase. To ask for that much in one jump is unrealistic, I know that. So that's why I'm, we're asking for 10% now, and if we can bring him, bring the position up over the next several years to get it in line with other counties of similar veteran population, that would be the ultimate goal. He has to know about programs that are not just giving out money, but also resources that have to do with helping veterans at various complexity levels, it's not just about money. Caregiver programs, you know, where the caregivers are trained in not just getting money for helping the veteran, but also learning about what's, how is it best to help the veteran? You know, you, if a veteran is going through a situation where they're having a flashback, you don't just run up to the veteran and grab them and say, oh, you know, I'm right here, you're not in Vietnam anymore, blah, 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 it's not that simple. That has to do with more than just dollars and cents. And if any of you have seen the recent movie Sniper, you, that was one of the things that that movie brought home very well, was that it has, it's not just about money compensation, it's about the emotional bringing back of people to today's reality, not just what goes on in the war, and compensating people monetarily. So, so it's various levels of interaction that you have with people in Louis' position. And in terms of the position related to other county positions, the one that's most comparable would be Rosie in general assistance, and Rosie does an absolute awesome job, and I, I worked with her close when I worked at Plains Area Mental Health as a therapist there, and, and I love Rosie, and Rosie's just totally awesome, but you already know that. And so Rosie's compensation level is, is also above Louis' level, and so I personally and professionally think that Louis' position should be at least on par with Rosie's position. And she works with a level of consumers that are also in need and, and dispenses the similar type of programs and services that Louis does, and even more so, Louis' programs and, and services serve a population that is, that warrants the same level of care. So that's my pitch. Period, comma, exclamation mark. And I, and I don't know if you know, I do, now I do work at the Veterans Clinic here in Carroll, at the Carroll Seabok, and I do mental health therapy for veterans, so that's what I do now, using my therapeutic license, and, and so, so obviously veterans are still near and dear to my heart, and I still do mental health therapy. Now I've switched over to the other side, so, whatever you want to call it. I still utilize my mental health therapy skills, thank you, that's the word. So, any other quest, any questions that I can answer? How we, we came to these conclusions?
So in this salary, you got the 10% increase for him, and the other one is two and a half?
Yes.
Yeah.
And a third of my assistance budget, or one-third of her salary, IFRS and insurance comes out of the $10,000 allocation from the state. I guess what I would have to add to that is, last year, and I think the Iowa Legislature is, is finding out more and more the importance of the position of the county director and the services that are given by the director out of his office. One of the changes in Chapter 35, and I've got a cap, and this was printed on the 9th of January this year, one of the significant changes they made was to take the director's appointment of salary from the supervisors to the commission. So it's technically, according to Iowa Code, Chapter 35, now it's the commissioners to set that. They last year had, with the home base, Iowa have included a lot of new benefits to the veterans, they've given them the 100% tax break for 100% service-connected disabled veterans. They've given incentives to change the, you can, you can take some of your military experiences and change them to college degrees credits, you can use that for that. You can also, you get reductions now for your license plate, your preferential hiring that you didn't get before. The mindset of a lot of boards of supervisors across the state, which has continued to drag down the amount, or the average of what the veterans directors get paid is, the mindset of a lot of the boards of supervisors was they were gonna find some old retired veteran that they could get in there and hire, and pay absolutely near nothing to do the position. The position is different than when it was my old director. My old director, basically, in most cases, handed papers across, across the desk, and those papers were given to the veterans to fill out with little assistance. Those, Iowa Code states that I will help them with all that now, and that's just how much the position has changed when it comes to that. As you can see on the expenditures report, and the amount that came in in 2013 did increase again, those are different for compensation pensions, they're for insurance and indemnities, it's for medical care, and once again, the people that use the Carroll Seabok, we only get credit for the people from Carroll County that use it, Green County veterans, SAC County veterans, Crawford County veterans, when their veterans use that facility, those dollars are given back as far as accounting for those, those allocation, or the funds that are in there. And also in Chapter 35, you notice where it says that the director will attend school, become accredited, and maintain accreditation every year, or will be-
Fired.
Be fired, and, and part of that accreditation that comes with that is the $10,000 allocation that comes to the county. So I challenge you to find how many people within the county system have to become accredited and keep that accreditation every year.
And they have to do continuing education units to keep that accreditation, so.
Yeah, it was a bit of a surprise, we did talk about this during our pre-budget discussion as well. So, and I've got Section 35 here, and what it says is, the commission shall recommend the compensation of the executive director, administrator, et cetera, et cetera, to the board of supervisors, and the board of supervisors shall consider the recommendation and shall determine the compensation. So it's our job to do, to hear the recommendation, which you just heard, it's our job to set the, set the salary. Could I have a copy of your comparison there?
Sure. This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I've got a copy of the new chapter, if you'd all like it here. What I would add to Neil also is that when it comes down to setting the budget, it says the commission shall meet annually to prepare and estimate a budget for all expenditures to be made the next fiscal year and certify that budget with the board of supervisors. It says the board may approve or reduce that budget for valid reasons shown in entered, an entered of record, and is, the board's decision is final, so, yeah, there, it, it, it doesn't say it's absolute.
Right, and I, and I do acknowledge that this is, it would have been nice if I could have talked to all of you and, and not had it be just such short notice to let you know our intention, so I do apologize for that. I'm new to this commission, and as you know, you appointed me, so, so I'm new to this, so I apologize for my newness.
No problem.
Yeah, it is a problem, he just said. I can take it. So if it's not this go-around, we'll catch it next time, and I'll be, I'll be at your doorstep sooner.
I certainly would like to give you a little more, giving you a number at that pre-budget, but at that pre-budget, I did show you where the- but at that pre-budget, I did show you where the change in the Iowa Code was, as far as the setting of the, or the recommended of the, of the salary, and that my commissioner still hadn't come up with the final budget numbers yet, so.
That's correct.
I was, I was correct to assume that you would look at that over the weekend and have caught it, Neil, so. As I expect you should.
I had a question on it, so.
Sure. Oh, and I expected you to, Mark.
Yeah.
Well, I expected all of you to catch it.
Yeah.
With Mark there.
Yep.
Good. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on the veterans?
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day, guys.
You too.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the next item, the approved payables, let's get back it.
We don't have to go through any of these, these listings.
You got General Assistance there and Substance Abuse? Is those the two you have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Substance Abuse didn't change. Justin just emailed me those figures.
And this Board of Health is what the new changes is the mileage and the salary?
Yeah. General Assistance, Rosie gave me that, she's on vacation. I guess if you guys want to look at General Assistance, and if you have questions, you can get in touch with her. It looked pretty cut and dry to me. I didn't see any.
We thought, we thought both of them were.
Wow. Anyway, take a look at it, and I think she said she'd be back next week, so.
Actually, Rosie's, if, this is the same as what she had. I have, I have no problem with it. She did raise, I think, some medication and, and rent payments because of what the history's been. And those were the big, biggest changes in there. I really don't see any need for them to come in, do you?
I'm sure she'll be thrilled, but she doesn't have this.
I'd like to see Rosie. I think we ever talked about somebody's medication, Rosie yelled right there.
I agree.
I'm assuming that ISAC has this information on that, and those charts we can look up. I'm glad you asked for this, because.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
If you look at the, the, I'm not sure how recent these counties are, we'll have to check that out.
A lot of them are shared position. And so, which is where they put the acts in the law.
I only know one other veteran personally, and it happens to be from Crawford County. And I know it's a shared position, she spends most of her time with something else, and doesn't even have a salary in for her. She taught really. Okay. I, I just want to say that this 25, 10th that raised.
Did she email?
Was completely.
Yes.
Was not mentioned at all in our pre-budget.
Did everybody else get it? Did you guys get that in your email? Did you get it in the email?
I didn't even look at it in the email.
Okay, you can have that. That's fine.
You sure?
There, I got two of them.
Well, then you got jeans.
Okay, whatever. I must have didn't go down far enough to email that.
No, thank you, I was going to.
I didn't have any real questions, I'll just start over. How does that, actually said I didn't have questions. The grand jury, it's so infrequent, I bet you I've asked that question before, but how does that work again? Are those reimbursed through district courts somehow?
We budget for it.
We do?
Yeah, like five, five to $900 a year. I don't know if we get revenue for that. I'd have to look.
That's all right.
To look. See if there's offset.
Well, that don't say grand jury, where's that at?
Page three, no, four.
They basically just, we'd meet right after first year, that's about it, huh? They go through jail and stuff?
No, these are, this is actually a trial.
Oh, was it a trial?
This was expenses for jury, yeah, jury members. Looks like mileage to me, because they're all different amounts.
Actually, this is one of our smaller ones we've had.
Yeah, they've, they've been pretty expensive.
Usually, every time we say this would have been pretty good, except for rolling hills or gravel or something, but there's none of the things in there, so.
I think we paid the vast portion of the bridge, but, yeah. Even that was only, only $27,000. If there's no questions, I make a motion to approve the payables this week.
I'll second that.
You have a motion on the second, approve the payables, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Okay, we've got the annual updates, we've got two of them, Michael and Section 13, Eaton Township, there's no changes on that one. And then Goian and Conneville LLC, and Section 32, Cleveland Valley, that one they're using through analysis. Okay, and then we'll go down to the plat, we've got one plat, Section 16, Eaton Township. Isn't that our?
Their railroad.
It looked familiar.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Probably doesn't have anything to do with that.
Well, that, that property got sold.
Got transferred.
Okay.
Michelson bought that, and I don't know what their, I don't have a map, if you're familiar with it, look at it.
We have a really bad bridge.
Well, I was just wondering if that.
But see, I just got this last night, this morning, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
You got a picture of the bridge?
Well, there's, the bridge would be, right here.
You would have got it in my email, and then Carl, when he gets it, he sends it out to all of you guys, so you might have gotten it twice.
And, and when I print those pictures, they really get distorted, so it's not like squares looking now like a satellite, they just get distorted. Section 16, Eaton Township, familiar with the area? I'm looking to approve the plat, it's pretty good.
So, what are they, are they, I wonder if they're trying to sell something off there?
This is where the bridge is at?
Mm-hmm.
This is the railroad, right?
Yeah, and so the road comes from here, crosses the railroad, and goes over here. And we're trying to see if we can just make an at-grade crossing right through here, and eliminate the bridge.
Okay. This isn't about the bridge?
No.
No.
No, I wasn't seeking a motion.
Whatever you got, motion on table, we just need a second.
Go ahead, Dean.
I'll second that.
Motion on the second, Section 16, Eaton Township, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're doing all we can to derail it today, sorry.
Next, we have the resignation from the sheriff's department. You got that in your packet?
Yeah, comes as a bit of a surprise, as a surprise, but as most of the time.
What is his intent, you know?
I, I knew that he qualified, there's several that do, but this, this one comes as a surprise. I make a motion to accept the retirement resignation of Kevin Culprider with regrets.
I'll second that. The motion on second, the resignation, Kevin Culprider, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
He's a good man.
Hey, community reports, Mark, you want to start off?
Very quickly, this Tuesday was Neil's, and I, we had our last pre-budget meeting, and that was with John Warden. And then Wednesday, I attended the Alice training. Do they call it Alert here? I think it's slightly different than Alice, but it's called Alert.
Yeah, they use both terms.
That was a crowded meeting room, which is good. And then also, of course, we had the budget workshop that evening. And on Thursday, I attended the inaugural Library Steering Committee meeting here for the city of Carroll. I didn't have to labor it much longer, but understand what our, it was very clear what our challenge, they call it our charge, is, is it's a 12-member committee, and they said several times, they appreciate the county's contribution to the committee. And our charge is simply this, we have to make a recommendation to the city council, they're forecasting about six meetings. They'll each be about two to three weeks in between, and we will be charged with making a recommendation to the city council of one of two options. And both of these options have to keep under an architect's engineering budget of 1.8 million dollars. So, the option one would be to remodel the existing library, and option two would be to remodel and expand the existing library. So, you know, as far as any other location or anything else, that, that's not our charge. We could make a recommendation to do nothing, you know, absolutely nothing. But the, the city council will then act upon our recommendation. They can either accept it, or deny it, or do something else, but their intent is to put it on a fall election ballot for voter approval, and it would require 60% voter approval.
The figure 1.8 million, what's the reason for that figure?
I asked that, and, and why wasn't it 1.9 or 1.7? I mean, it's.
What's significant about 1.8 million?
Yeah, it was essentially a targeted number that the city councilmen that have council people that have promoted this initiative, they believe that that will sell on a ballot. Anything much more than that may not. And it's also falls within the scope of services that the architects believe can be done. You know, why isn't it, you know, 1.2 million dollars? Well, it's, for, for an example, I just gave you two options, and you say, well, one of those options is going to cost far more than the other option, and, and that's one of the, you know, issues that we're facing. They, they can, we look at the property lines, they can expand to the north into the old Fifth Street, they can expand to the east closer to Court Street, and that would add about 7,000 square feet if you went max on both ends. The current library is about 10,000 square feet. There, there was not much discussion or even opportunity to go much to the south. I guess, apparently, that seems to be a little bit hands-off, because that's where a lot of staff park. I raised a question at the very end of it, and, and they appreciated, of what about going up? Because you, you know, you already own everything going up, and, you know, that would take some, you know, engineering study and so on, which, everything's going to eat into that 1.8 million dollars. And I, I, you know, forewarned them, you know, there was, there was this, what I'll call a wish list, if you will, and you kind of read the article in paper, you know, we need more room, more spaces, more things. As, as you go moving exterior walls, that eats up that 1.8 million dollars rather quickly. And so then you're going to have less things to stay within budget. So if you stay within the current walls, you're going to be, Neil will have an opportunity to have more things, but one of the top things on the list was more space. So, it's, it's going to be interesting to see how this thing all plays out.
Bigger footprint detracts from the parking space as well.
So we'll see how it plays out. That was my week.
I just said two things, I had a conservation meeting on Monday night, and then the, the budget meeting on Wednesday night. Things covered at the conservation, they reviewed the budget again, and they elected officers. There was discussion on the Teegis property, mostly just an update on where they're at. I had mentioned, you and I would kind of like to go down and see it sometime. But it sounds like, I don't know what it looked like when they started, but it didn't look like much, obviously, and they, they're making some big headways there, so, it's looking a lot better, I guess. They had some water issues, and they were real simple fixes, mostly just gutter.
Oh, good. So that concern about structure and the wall space went away?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's dry now, so.
Good.
They're moving ahead with drywall, and they took some wall, took a wall out, I guess.
So just get the water away from it, is, yeah, that's point number one.
Yeah, that's all they had to do, really.
Electrification, or use wire.
Yeah, yeah. They talked about the Suck Rail Trail Lifetime Pass, they're still in discussion about that. And there's Coon Rapids Campgrounds, I'm not aware of that, but they brought me up to speed on it, and they're thinking about increasing spots for it. I think that's probably the discussion that's been going on for quite a while. Other than that, that's all there was.
Tuesday at CADC, we basically just had community updates from Manning, Templeton, Coon Rapids, that was it. And I will say, you know, Manning took up a big share of the time, and they even had printed documents, they all been going through the flash, and I'll pass that around, I mean, you know, they're been top of the list for grants, so, they're doing very well there. And then on, I went also to the Alice training, so, that was my week.
Well, as Mark mentioned, on Tuesday, we had the preliminary budget hearing of County Attorney John Warden, and I also attended the Alice training on Wednesday. And then Thursday, Marty and I visited with Mallard View, Don Minzer was there, along with the entire Mallard, part of the Mallard View board, I should say, the entire board, and some of their employees, and we met with them, and we talked a lot about the possibility of being a crisis stabilization home, also some possibility to do a transition home. And I, I think Sherry knows where she needs to go, she needs to review this change in the legislation, and see if the structural even qualifies for crisis stabilization. But I think the important thing to be accomplished is, we really got in, starting with a good brainstorming session, like what we're going to do next with Mallard View, because they know they're going to have to do some changes. The board realizes that, and I thought it was an excellent meeting.
Thanks for doing that, I didn't realize you.
Yeah, Marty, a great asset to have along as well. Then just a few things, I picked up, the master matrix, they, they said that 88 counties out of 100 did that. And one point I just want to make reading out of that, it says, "All counties may submit comments to DNR during the review process for mid-applications. However, only counties that adopt the master matrix can also appeal approval to the EPA." So that's what that thing is, I'll give it that. And then issue three, from Bill Hebra, our lobbyist at ISAC, talked a lot about the gas tax, he said the current plan is a simple 10%. They want to make that, sure that any amount of the new funding goes to new projects and not pay off debts that counties have already established. And in Southern Iowa, there was a unique thing, so, they're talking about moving the county seats, and there's legislation requiring 60% vote of people, and he said that we're voting against that based on the fact it goes against home rule and circumvents your decision-making ability, and you think differently. And then finally, an article, the Des Moines Register came up, it had to do with county debt, that they're trying to say how county debt is associated with our need for public roads, and it had that the, some of the top counties was right in the northern tier, Worth, Mitchell, Howard, and Winnebago Counties, and those counties had 25 million of debt, and one of those counties has a debt that equals $3,366.
I read that.
That's Worth County, for each of its 7,541. And I learned something about that. The reason they have that big debt is because of the casino up there. They built all kinds of nice roads and infrastructure for the casino, which they had to borrow money to do. So that's how that county got into that position. You don't bring that out.
They shouldn't have to build any roads, because it's right along the interstate.
That's, that's the word I got, yeah, is that Worth County's got a lot of different, different things for it. I know it is, and I know what you're saying, but that, that's the word I got, so, it'd be interesting to know what they did for, or they spent their money for that, for other things for the casino, and didn't have it for the roads, I'm not sure. That's a word from another elected official that I heard this morning. So, those are just a few things of interest that concern us that I want to pass along, in addition to our meetings that I had with Marty and Mark, you guys. That was the week here.
All I had was Neil kind of covered at Mallard View, a lot of concerns there. One thing I did go in, after that meeting on Friday. One thing I did go, after that meeting on Friday, I went out with Mark Tensley and Chris Whitaker, as far as getting any funding, as far as if we do end up going into housing, and to see if there's any funding through a block grant, or what we can do there through Region 12. One thing I'd like to do, and I want to talk to Don a little bit about this, is to maybe set up a meeting in March, and kind of brainstorm a little bit, where do we go from here? I mean, this thing is going to be like a five-year transition, is what the game plan is, but we have to have the Wester proposal in by July of this year, as far as the family crisis. But as far as the group homes, I kind of want to get surface something there, just to kind of see where we're headed, or what it's going to cost to do that, and how we can fund it. So, those are some hurdles we're going to have to cross down the road.
I agree with you, Marty, and I'm just, how do you visualize that? You think it'll be the two of us at a board meeting then, or do you want to have us have a meeting with them here?
I would say just put it together, task force, and do like we did at Mallard View, again, have their board, a couple of us, and then maybe Don and Sherry.
You need to utilize Mallard View with that crisis, is what you're going to have to renovate it or whatever.
Yeah, look at some of the avenues, I think those are things we have to look forward to, I mean, we've got to start somewhere.
Two issues with Mallard View, one is, it's not a residential setting, which they want for crisis stabilization, and that's not a requirement, it's a want. But the touchy issue that nobody gets for sure, is it cannot be more than 16 beds, is that the number? And they're saying, well, if we just section off one wing, and that's crisis, and this is something that, well, they didn't know. They think, no, it's just part of the bigger thing, and they're saying, no, it could be a separate entity, just, well, it's different. So, that's a question that Sherry needs to get answered, could they be?
What'd be nice about that, they could have two separate entities, but share a lot of the services that you get, like food, preparation, heating costs.
Sounds like efficiency to me.
Excellent point.
That's better than what the state would think of, you know?
That's almost anti-government.
And they're kind of leaning towards an entity, another planes, I think, is interested, very interested in doing this, that was one of them that she mentioned, and we did bring that up, we said, well, maybe there's some advantages to having a residential setting, but look at the infrastructure we have here, the building, we'd have to get a house you wouldn't have to rent, and all these things.
Get into it quicker.
Because they don't think one of these in our region's going to be enough, but this might be a great place to start. If you're just going to start something new, you want to start with less overhead, rather than jump in and then see if you can survive. So, absolutely, Gene, your point was mentioned, and I totally agree.
Everyone is going to see where it goes, but we've got to be on the outlook and see where we can.
And it's a job, and it's to be proactive on this, because although we're going to have a building after it's going to be-
Exactly, yeah.
Absolutely. They got the space.
Yep.
One other thing I wanted to mention, under my unique information, is on February 3rd, I see where NACO, National Association of Counties, did testify in front of both houses of Congress on the waters of the US, in opposition to those EPA regulations. I was glad to see that they jumped out of the board. Okay, that's all I have.
Any comments from those in attendance?
We're in order for a motion, we're just all moved. Think you'll give a second on that?
I'll second it.
Got a motion in the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.